Yeah. We're gonna, yeah, we'll, uh, I'll call in from Mr. Rowan. Okay, why don't we, uh, why don't we get started? We've got, uh, a couple of speakers and non-agenda public testimony. James Worth, David Egan, and, uh, Borden Hughes. Yep, please come up to the podium. Right here, yep, thank you.
One at a time?
Yes, one at a time, yeah.
One at a time.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm sorry. But anyway, my name, um, as you have on there is, is James Rodworth. And, um, I've been a school bus driver with the San Diego District in good standing for 26 years, and I have an excellent, um, driving record and work record. And, um, today I would just like to speak on some of the recent developments that had come to my attention, um, concerning the employment of retired school bus drivers that are working as hourly part-time school bus drivers. Um, see if I might got it. In night, oh, well, in 2009, I was offered, you know, the early retirement incentive, or what they call the golden handshake, I guess. And, um, you know, I'd just turned 55 years old, I was eligible for pension for PERS, so I accepted the offer and I retired. But, at that time, the district policy was to allow retired, um, school bus drivers to continue to drive as part-time hourly substitute drivers as they were needed. And many retired, you know, retired drivers, you know, had been doing that for years. Well, um, my first year in that category was, you know, the two, last year, the 2009, 2010 school year, and I drove, um, you know, bus routes during the entire last year under that classification. And as the 2010-11 year approached, I got a letter from Transportation which basically welcomed me back and informed me that I was scheduled to report for work at 6:30 a.m. on Wednesday, September 1st. But, um, on August 31st, the evening before, I received a call from Daniel Gilbreth telling me that my services were, you know, would not be needed and not to report for work as scheduled for the next morning. And I've subsequently discovered, you know, from what I consider to be, you know, reliable sources, that, you know, my position has been, you know, completely terminated. And I have not received any official confirmation, you know, from the school district either verbally, you know, or in writing of that termination. It's just sort of, kind of through the grapevine that I've, you know, I'm, I've been terminated. So, you know, I completely understand that, you know, my services, you know, as an hourly, you know, temporary substitute driver are, you know, as needed. But, I'm not understanding, you know, it's completely unexpected that my position has completely been terminated. And, you know, I'm, I'm not really sure why. I haven't really received any, um, you know, anything of, from anyone in authority, in verbally or in writing. So I guess my question today is why, you know, why has my position been terminated? And has the school district's longstanding policy of employing retired drivers, you know, to work in part-time hourly positions as they are needed, you know, has that been changed, you know, in any way? Because, you know, if, if it's an issue of cost, you know, my hourly wage was a couple of dollars an hour higher because the district sort of offered that as an incentive, I guess, to retired drivers.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Worth. Can I ask the superintendent to get back and get you some clarity on the situation, on your situation?
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Egan? No, uh, Mr. Hughes, yes.
My name is Borden Hughes. I've been a school bus driver for San Diego Unified School District for 30 years. My last day, my last day of full-time monthly benefited employment as an extra-board school bus driver was 31 October 2008. My first day of retirement was October 1st, 2008. I did not take the golden handshake. I worked the 2008-2009 school year, the 2009-2010 school year, as a part-time hourly substitute school bus driver. My question to the board members is, why was I not informed that I had been terminated but had to learn of my termination through rumor? Because I did speak with Daniel Gilbreth on 2 September 2010 in his office, and at that time, he did not inform me of my termination and just said there was no work for part-time hourly school bus drivers. On September 8th, because I'd heard these rumors that I was terminated, I called my supervisor, Jennifer Henry, and asked her directly if I had been deleted from the system and terminated. And she said that I had. And I thanked her, and that was the end of our conversation. I do want to state that Jennifer has been a very good supervisor and very fair to me, and I enjoyed working with her and it's been very rewarding. My second question is, and it's the same as the previous speaker, um, why was it necessary to terminate me along with 16 other bus drivers and two truck drivers? We're very good employees. I don't think our cost is that much more per hour, and perhaps when you consider you don't pay into social security and PERS, we might be very, very close. And, uh, and that's about all I have to say. If there's any questions anybody wants to ask me, I'd be certain they're happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you.
And we'll, again, we'll try to get some clarity.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks very much, yeah. Okay, and David Egan? No. Okay, we will, uh, we will begin our meeting then. I'd like to ask the Army JRTC color guard from San Diego High School to present the colors. Are they here? Great, please stand. Where do you begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Right, face. Port, arms. Have step, march, left. 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 Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call this September 14th, 2010 regular meeting to order with all board members present. If you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue sheet located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Non-agenda item testimony was heard at 5:00 p.m. and will also be heard at the end of the meeting. At this time, I'd like the ASB student representative to the board to introduce herself. Please tell us about yourself and what's going on at your school, both academically and socially. Brianna Harris from the School of Creative and Performing Arts. Brianna.
Hi, I'm Brianna from the School of Creative and Performing, the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts. At SCPA, um, everybody's settling into their classes now. Um, the school year just started on the 7th, so all the schedules are being revised. Um, as far as, as far as classes go, um, all my teachers are, are really supportive this year. If I ever need help, they're there, even though it's the beginning of the year, I'm a senior this year, so, I mean, the courses are pretty tough. And also, my AP classes, there's more students than ever in AP classes this year, so that's good. And, and ASB, we're working on, um, setting up school events to get the students involved and get more school spirit.
All right. Thanks, Brianna, and welcome to the, to the board. Okay, um, superintendent, we've got administrative report.
Yes, President Brer. First, let me announce the administrative assignments approved by the board. First, Jody Bonderrant Strong to Director, Special Education Department Office of the Chief Student Services Office. And second, Armando Tovar Jr. to Vice Principal, Erickson Elementary School Area Superintendent's Office.
Right, thank you.
And if I could proceed with the superintendent's information report, I'd like to have all of the area superintendents, please come to the podium here for a moment. As they come forward, what I want to do is officially at a first formal board business meeting with the opening of school to present them to the community and to staff and trustees as well. We had only one other opportunity, and that was at a return to school, welcome back event that we had at Kearney High School. And what I want to do, in just alphabetical order, call them up. And first, Angela Bass, who represents our Mira Mesa Scripps Communities.
Good evening, I'm Angela Bass, and it's an honor and a pleasure to serve the Mira Mesa Scripps Ranch community. We spent, uh, the time since July 1st, uh, visiting with community members, parents, and then most recently with, um, about 800 teachers who are very, very excited to come together to improve what they've already begun to do. They believe they've done good work, but they believe there is a next level to go. And so, we're looking forward to working and planning together, and it's going to be an exciting year. Thank you.
Rupee Boy, Crawford Charter School Communities.
Hello, it's a pleasure to be here. As once again, I've been in Crawford, Crawford Community Cluster for about 10 years, so it's really great to work with the community. See the kids that were with me at Jackson, now in high school. So it's a great pleasure, and I look forward to supporting the Crawford community as well as the Charter Schools.
Tony Burks, Kearney Hoover Communities.
You know, I have to have a script, otherwise I'll talk for 20 minutes. I'm certainly delighted to serve as area superintendent for Area 9, which really spans a, a large geographical territory, north and south of the proverbial 8 organized into two clusters represented by communities as far-reaching as City Heights, Serra Mesa, and Linda Vista. As area superintendent, I collaborate with 32 principals who work at 31 physical sites, including two separate and distinct Twain satellites, and service to 17,201 students and their families. Certainly looking forward to the tremendous work that will, we will certainly put into this, uh, area over the coming weeks and months. Just thought I would share about Area 9 and numbers.
Thank you. Brenda Camel, Lincoln Morris Communities.
Good afternoon. It's a great honor to, uh, serve at the pleasure of the Lincoln Morris Cluster. Area 1 is off to a great start. Uh, we have organized our meetings for monthly, um, get-togethers in clusters. The second Monday of every month is when Lincoln High School meets, and then the third Monday is when Morris Cluster meets. There are approximately 27 schools in Area 1, and there's 20,000 students, and they are all energized and ready to organize around improving student achievement.
Thank you, Brenda. Diana Carberry, Mission Bay, Point Loma Communities.
Good evening. Again, Diana Carberry, I have, uh, the pleasure of working with the Point Loma and Mission Bay Clusters as well as I High. I had both high schools last year serving as an SIO, so I'm familiar a little bit with the communities already, and I've done a little work with the clusters, but I'm excited to, uh, begin moving forward on the work that we need to do to improve student learning. Thank you.
Thank you. David Lorden from the Patrick Henry Serra Communities.
Good evening. It's an honor to be part of this, uh, district and serve in the capacity of area superintendent for the Serra and Henry Clusters. Uh, the Henry Cluster is, uh, geographically located in the Del Sero and, uh, I lost my train of thought.
San Carlos.
San Carlos and Allied Gardens. And, uh, it is, uh, we have, uh, one high school, Patrick Henry, two middle schools, and eight elementary schools. And the Serra Cluster is located in Terrasana, and we have Serra High School, two, uh, middle schools, and five elementary schools. And we're excited to really form as clusters, uh, in then, this coming year. Thank you.
Hector Montenegro, who's in the San Diego High Community.
Good. It's, uh, absolute pleasure and honor to work with the San Diego High Cluster. It has really turned out to be quite a enthusiastic and energetic group of principals. We have, uh, 26 schools altogether, six at the high school. And, uh, the, uh, the initiative and focus of the principals is really to have that opportunity to get to know each other and to get to know what the, uh, the feeder pattern looks like. Uh, of course, we have two middle schools, but we actually have four K8 schools. So that is equivalent to about six, uh, middle schools altogether. But they're very enthusiastic about, uh, supporting each other and especially preparing our children, uh, to, uh, consider the options at the high school, so we're really happy to be, uh, working together. Thank you.
Marian Phelps from Madison Clermont Community.
Good evening, Mary Kim Phelps, area superintendent for the Clermont and Madison Clusters. I'm responsible for supporting 18 schools within the Clermont area, two of them that are K-12, um, atypical schools. To date, I've had the opportunity to meet with all of our school principals and visit all their school sites, meet with, uh, various community advocates, and I'm in the process of attending all of the school staff meetings, um, to get to know and become familiar and introduce myself to the, the schools. Um, I'm looking forward to the work of building strong community clusters that are created on the foundations of building trusting and collaborative relationships. With the goal of being, going beyond the single story of Clermont Schools being the stepchild of the district, to showcasing exemplary schools where all children succeed in Clermont. Thank you.
Mike Price from University City La Jolla Community.
Good afternoon. Hi, I'm Mike Price, and on June 30th, I left University City High School as principal and turned right around on the 1st and now became the area superintendent for University City and for La Jolla Schools. It's a great honor, it's a great pleasure, uh, to be able to do that. Building on the work from University City from last year and then becoming familiar with the work that's been going on in La Jolla, knowing the principals and beginning to know the community members there has been a real joy and a lot of fun this summer. So we're all looking forward to continuing that work, building on it, and having a great school year. Thank you.
Shirley Wilson from Lincoln Morris Communities.
Good afternoon. It's a great, it's a great pleasure to serve Lincoln Morris Cluster area. I'm excited about the work that we'll be doing this year with staff and families to improve the achievement of all students in that particular area. I look forward to doing everything we can do to make sure we do the very, very best for those students. Thank you.
Thank you, area superintendents, and, uh, we had a good conversation with the board this afternoon as we try to evolve the team to the next level, from building principal teams to building community cluster teams, and there's a lot of energy and focus out there. Just a couple other quick items for the board and the community as a whole. We did open school, uh, this past Tuesday, and is, uh, my historical perspective, it's the 156 slash 7th year of the, of the district. We mark our, uh, our birth, uh, July the 1st, 1854. And, uh, along with that, we recognize one of our, uh, premier schools, Hoover High, opened the year for the 80th time. Interesting, uh, opened in 1930, named for a sitting president, uh, Mr. Hoover, and they've had many generations of San Diegans graduate and go on to great things, athletes, community leaders, and so on, so it's, it's a special year for them. I was around, uh, the, um, district that day, visiting two, uh, elementaries, middle and high school, and we had volunteers from all of the central office out there. It was a full-team effort that day and for the rest of the week and through this week. We are in the midst of what we believe is the critical few weeks of stabilizing staffing and students and making things happen. And by many of the veterans' regard, uh, one of the smoothest opening weeks that we've had. Couple minor glitches around maybe a staffing need or a, a transportation need or something like that, but in the main, kids are in school and teachers are managing classes and teaching and learning's occurring. Two other quick items, uh, on Friday night, I participated in the curfew sweep here in the City Heights area, I should say in the City Heights area, coordinating between the San Diego Police Department and volunteers, uh, from across the, the city and the neighborhood in particular, uh, trying to identify and, um, bring forward in a safe environment underage kids out past curfew, and it was an eye-opening experience. We operate with the support of the Cherokee Point Elementary School, uh, and, um, I think we are moving in a better, closer collaboration with the city and the city police department and have some thoughts about improving their process and bringing those children back around. And it was, it was sobering, uh, to have, uh, driven in the car with a police officer and identified the pickups. It was, uh, serious and sobering. Last item on a more positive note, uh, on Sunday, um, we have that famous Annex 1, uh, right behind, uh, the Ed Center here, that large, uh, building, celebrating its 100th birthday, and, uh, the North Park Community, uh, came out. Richard and I had a chance to speak to the group as lo, as well as Councilman Gloria, Congressman, Congressman Davis, and the city librarian, Deborah Barrow. And what we're all about here is trying to continue what I think is a nice track record of partnering the city and school district around libraries. Uh, we've got the success in the Logan Heights Memorial Middle School Library, a participation in the new Central Library, and now, we'd like to take that historical building, re-preserve or restore it, uh, use a first floor, uh, as a neighborhood library and a second floor as, uh, district offices, and, uh, put it back and use, making it relevant, a historical treasure that should have a future. That's all I have.
Right. Thank you, superintendent. Um, and I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda, but I'll just, get a motion in a second, and I'll just point out that, um, Ms. Nakamura will need to excuse herself for a little while. It's 6 o'clock, and I will need to excuse myself for a little while at about 20 after 6:00. So anything controversial, make sure you guys deal with. Right, right? Yeah. Okay, so we've got a motion in a second. Great.
When it gets rough.
Yeah, when it goes, it gets rough. We're out of here. Okay, um, great, so now is, uh, what's going to become a regular, uh, part of our, uh, agenda every month is an update on our goals for student achievement. Dr. Meyer?
Yes, thank you. Um, during, during the summer, our work group that works on the goals for student achievement as part of the operational expectations for the board, um, got together and they met twice during their summer in July. And I'd like to state that this included teachers, this included principals, this also included community members, and other support curriculum staff that got together to help us build the plan. And so, as part of this, I just wanted to share as a brief update, um, some of the things that occurred. Given the board's direction from the last update that we had in August, we were asked to go back and flush out some indicators of student achievement that could really give us a sense if we were on the right path and in the right direction. So we, um, pulled together a subgroup of the larger, uh, task force, and they worked on literacy, and they looked for indicators of, of achievement that would encourage critical thinking, reaching the full academic potential, and one-year's growth in the area of literacy. And, and this particular group got together and kind of threw everything off the table, brought research, brought work, and really got to fleshing out some things that they're wor, they were working on. Just to share some of the tools that they used, uh, they brought the national core standards, which are, are fairly relatively new, uh, set of standards that are national, and they wanted to, to measure them against the California standards and also look and see how it fit in with our direction. They also brought together other indicators of reading and writing success that they had seen across the nation. So they had pulled different things from different places, so they wanted to, to get a sense of what other districts were doing that was working. They also, uh, had a great discussion about the fact that literacy really permeates through all of the content areas, and so our task is to look at each of the content areas, but literacy was the first because it will be woven through each of the particular content areas. And so as a result, they have started the work of putting out the reasonable interpretation, but they're working on the indicators, and have brought together quite a few of these indicators that, um, are very specific. And now the task is really to, to take this out further, to bring it forward to the area superintendent group, to take it to principals and to other various stakeholding groups to look at these indicators, um, as we march towards bringing it back to the board. Some of the things that, um, we should share, um, on October 6th, we will bring, uh, these indicators to you for your review and approval, and that they will also include the research and some of the work that they did. They are looking forward to sharing the, um, this themselves with you and talking about how they arrived at some of these particular indicators. In addition, they, um, they've been continuing to review the draft and, and really looking at indicators they could have kindergarten through 12th grade that they can share as we work with, with our strong area superintendent leaders to articulate K-12. They want to assist, and everyone will be involved in that conversation on what indicators at each grade level are necessary for success at the next grade. It's a very large task, but a very important one, because the goal is to find, um, if we have any gaps as students progress, we want to fill them and we want to find them as soon as possible. Part of this discussion, as I see, includes also how we will bring parents and community into this, into this conversation. We have connected with the Ballard Center and B. Fernandez and the community engagement groups that she meets with on a regular basis and hope to share it through that venue as well. Um, just a couple of final last things. Then, on November 9th, um, we will be prepared to have that completed section, and that literacy section will be used as a model for the social science, for the math, for the history, et cetera. And, and some of these groups are kind of starting up as subgroups at the same time. So we're, we're trying to get them, them kind of lifted all at the same time. The next subgroup that plans to start the work is in line with our math initiative for the district, and the math subgroup is the next group that will be looking at indicators that address the whole student. Um, we have had, uh, university, um, universities talk to us since Superintendent Koba's, um, you know, announcement of the math initiative, and, and we've also had a lot of teachers and principals who've come to us interested in helping with the math. So that, that will be the next subgroup for that reason and for, for many others. All in all, um, over the summer, um, we should be very proud of the work that, that these volunteers have done to come together to help assist in contributing.
I'm just curious, Ms. Myers, as you know, I'm very interested in the CalPass program. When are we going to receive the program that shows us, or the report that tells us how our schools, our students have done and when they have progressed into high school and, um, college? Excuse me, I'm very anxious to hear that report.
We, we know that the CalPass had, had some delays due to the data, and, and I guess if, if Ron Rode, if you could please, if there is an update on the time. I don't have the exact date. I know that when we've hooked up with our local universities, um, we have looked at the data, um, with SDSU.
Okay.
And with other universities, and, and we have seen that as they're entering, they're, they're fairly in line with the, um, EAP test that they take as juniors, in that they, there are some gaps between that 12th grade year and that freshman year. And so, filling those gaps, the CalPass will greatly inform how we can possibly fill those gaps. Um, I don't have the exact date.
We'll have to get an update.
And we can get an update to you on when CalPass will be up in, you know.
I just think that's going to be such a powerful tool for us, particularly at high school. Help us focus.
It will be. Thank you.
Yeah.
Just want to say first, I would appreciate your good work. The whole reason that we're doing this is because we want to have our own San Diego measures of, uh, success. And we're, we're very happy that in the last few years, we have made steady gradual progress on, on both, uh, federal and state tests. But that's a very minimal level of, of, of covering what we were doing in school. We're really looking at what's going on with the whole student. And so, as besides performing well and being proficient in reading and math, we also want to look at how we're doing in the arts, how we are doing in physical fitness, how we are doing in development of citizens, how we're doing in critical and creative thinking. And so that's really been the, the thinking of the board behind this push for these goals for student achievement. We want to say that we have successful schools, but we want to be able to say that in a very clear, precise way to demonstrate that we really are achieving success here in San Diego. And I think it's a, it's a really, really big job that you're, you're undertaking and, but it's really, really important, and I appreciate the, the timeline you're giving us so that we're not just talking about ideals, but we're actually moving forward. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Dr. Meyer. We look forward to your report on the, on the 6th.
Thank you.
Yep, great. Okay, um, item E2. Okay, item E2, this is the extension of the current state required single plans for student achievement. And a second, Ms. Jackson?
I do have concerns about this item, and I apologize for not including my questions to the staff. I don't think that we should delay it, I think that we're delaying it because we have a glitch here at the Ed Center. I think the single site plan still should be done at the school sites. If I'm reading this correctly, and maybe I'm not reading it correctly, but if I'm reading this correctly, it's asking us to wait until we get those glitches worked out. And I thought that the school sites had already submitted their single site plans for the 10-11 year, that they've already, even though that budgetary part has some glitches in it, that the overall mindset of that plan is still there and is still being implemented at school sites. So I do have a concern, because we started the school year, and certainly, the goal would have been whatever the schools had planned last year to start putting in place, they had put those items in place. So if this request to say that we're not going to move forward with items at school sites because there's a glitch in our system here, then I do have a problem with this.
What this item is asking you to do is to approve the existing SPSAs because we ran into problems completing the school plan part of it last spring. The budget part was done in consultation with the SSC at each site, and that part was approved. There, again, just to maintain compliance with the federal requirements, and this has happened in the past at other school districts, we consulted CD staff members, and they're the ones that recommended that we get your board approval to extend the current ones from the prior year until such time as they can be updated this school year.
Okay, maybe I'm still, okay, and I guess for maybe the public knowledge, usually during this fall of each year, the school is working to prepare its site plan for the following year. So last year, end of '09 and early beginning part of this year, the schools worked diligently to have a site plan. And I guess my confusion is, that part of it, the actual hands-on part of it, they're still doing. This is just saying that whatever we have to submit, we have to put an extension of submitting it to someone. Is that correct?
Right now, or as of last spring, you did not approve 10-11 SPSAs for all of our sites, because they didn't have a chance to complete the planning part, matching the goals with the budget. So the budgets were approved, but not the actual goals and the plans about what their priorities were. So what we're asking tonight is that you, they had priorities and plans from the prior year, which of course-
Nineteen year.
Yes, that of course will probably be tweaked based on new data. So again, they'll be working this fall, and in some ways, it's a benefit because now they have the state test data that they would not have had last spring in order to look at the priorities for their sites. So they will continue working on the plan this fall. Those plans are scheduled to be submitted by October 25th, and they will be approved, brought forward for approval at the December board meeting.
So then what happens to the 11-12 plan?
They will start working on that next spring, or in the winter. So they'll be progressing through our typical SPSA cycle next year, and we believe we will have the entire site-based budgeting tool ready to go so they can do both the budget piece and the planning piece in that online tool.
So I just want to express my concern that, I know there was some glitches last in the spring, but it's concerned that they're having to spend the beginning of the school year finishing up their plans for this year, and then we're going to put a really tight crunch on them for the 11-12 school year to meet the deadline for the next group. So we need to find some way to help support them in that endeavor. I just need, they need to have some additional support. I don't want them just out there getting pushed, squeezed, squeezed on both ends really quickly for two years.
And I would, just to respond to Trustee Jackson, we are in a collaboration of the CFO and IT, cleaning up and testing that site-based plan so they can do the SPSA automated, and we're doing that testing this time now in the fall, so that there is none of that crunch, and we're going to pilot it with some of the schools.
Let's hear the back.
Well, I detect, I'm going to push this button because I care about my heart, I guess. I detect a mismatch between logic and what's happening. It seems to me like, for example, that a school year, you plan before you go to it, and you get a budget that you then use to implement your plan. But if I'm hearing this right, the school year will be all the way to October before they do a plan for this year, based on a budget we've already approved last year. And then they'll have to hurry up fast and plan for next year on a budget that's not yet approved for that year. So logic tells me that maybe we ought to just stop for a minute and think this out and say, what are we going to do about this? Maybe it's federal regulations and they're illogical, or maybe we've got some lobbying to do, I don't know. But my take on this is, it seems to me that it's an impossible situation for a school to start, proceed a school year with staffing, with program development, with all the things they have to do, so September till October, whenever, and then to have it come back to the board for approval retroactively, and then turn around and start engaging in a planning for an activity for the following year that's a single-site plan, that they haven't got a clue about how it's going to be financed. You know, that's bad business, it's just bad business. And if it's the way we have to do business because of somebody else's constraints, okay, but I can't keep saying that this is a good way to work, and I, you know, that bothers me, it just bothers me. And if we can't lobby for logic, I don't know what the heck we should be lobbying for.
Many sites did some preliminary work in the spring. We gave them the template that we had used in prior years, so they did a lot of work in the spring to get ready. They knew that they were going to have to revise it this fall. This is not the typical way that we would do it, it's an anomaly this past year because of the issues we had with the new tool that we had hoped to roll out. So again, starting next year, we will return to our typical planning cycle where we look at the plan in the spring along with the budget, get that approved, and it'll be in place once we start this new school year next September.
That's a promise. I'll be here to find out.
Look, I just wanted to comment that it wasn't a federal glitch, it's a glitch on our behalf, and I think we all remember last year when the principal was going in and overnight all their work was disappearing. So I believe that the work was actually done, and so we're not necessarily approving their plans, have already made the plans, and he just couldn't get it into the system because it was, you know, having all those glitches. But I just have concern that the delay is probably something that we need to do for the federal people, not for us, because the schools really did do their due diligence last year, and they had their budgets approved, so they knew what they were planning on would be acceptable for the beginning of the school year. But this is just cleaning it up at a different level. And I just want to make sure that their responsibility is not for the school sites.
I think you accurately depicted what's happened.
Yes.
The plans were put together, the glitches came with the IT system, and they proceeded forward to match budget to plan. And where we are is just doing an administrative closure here.
Right.
And I agree with Mr. DeBeck that it's a very convoluted system, and in the short time down the board, the history member is, last year, we had asked for some, we looked at the plan beginning of the year, or sometime before the beginning of the year, and we asked for a mid-year update, and then the principals were responding, well, we don't have any further data to update. And so one of the problems that a principal pointed out to me last year was, in the spring, we're making our plans for our budget for next year, but we don't have the data yet on our performance for this year. So one of the budget decisions might be to bring an extra person to work with English language learners without knowing yet how they were performing with their English language learners. So, and I realize there are lots of federal and other requirements, but this is a concern, how do we bring this all into line so that when principals and other leaders are doing planning, that it is really meaningful, that it does make a difference as far as how things are budgeted, it does make a difference for what the emphasis is in the classroom, and it's not just, here's another form from the federal government that we have to turn out, and we're kind of playing around with different timelines back and forth. So I know it's complicated, and my just comment is, and I know that with you being in the accountability office, that this is a really important thing that we should look at in terms of how can we bring this all together so that student data, achievement, budgeting, planning, all of that are brought together. It's a big job.
And they're out of sync. Okay, please vote. Okay, item E, yeah, item E3, sorry, the course of study for the 2010-11 year.
Question in a second.
Any comment?
Yeah, I want to comment.
Through the back, yes.
Okay. This, for the people who are viewing, is our course of study. It's so big, and it's not even consecutively numbered. It's got a convoluted set of listings of things all over the place, and if this is our work product, this is what we designed for kids to learn, okay? I don't think many people have even looked at it, okay? Now, and I just pulled out a section because I can't get into that. I mean, that's too much to even talk about, I'd probably be too long on this. But let's talk about the final product, which is high school graduation requirements. We just got through talking about A to G upstairs, you know, we think that's a good idea, and in our graduation requirements, we have courses listed that don't meet the A to G requirements. This document is completely against a lot of what the board's policies are. And I'm just going to pick out a few things because it's like, it's this crazy stuff. This is, you know, what I spent most of my life trying to do, is trying to make coherence out of a curriculum as a teacher, then as a curriculum specialist, and finally on the board. So here's just an example, try to be simple, but, okay, we have graduation requirements for attendance. There's no percentage requirement, there's no standards for it, it's just attendance. So, you know, if you come, then you graduate. Well, that's okay, well, why have it down if you haven't got a set of rules for what it requires? And I know that the attendance pays for what we do, okay? I'm going to move on because there's other things. Conduct. Everybody's got to behave, except, we don't worry about it until the 12th grade. It's right here, okay? No standards, no ongoing standards, just, you know, and there's things like, whether you can participate in sports, has nothing to do with graduation, it's just a rule for participation, which isn't graduation rules, it's just rules. So then we go down to credits. We have a plan here that says, students on an approved early graduation plan, there's no such thing. It's individually negotiated, it's not a plan that even kids know about. You know, early graduations should be in our policy, we should have a way that a kid can come to us and say, yeah, I get it. You know, if I take two years of foreign language in middle school, then I don't have to take it in high school. Then if I take three years of advanced math in middle school, I don't have to take that in high school. Now I don't even need a 12th grade because I'm ready to go, because I'm already at AP level in the 11th grade. No, 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 we just want you to come. It's part of seat time. This thing, if you examine it piece at a time, okay, good one, these are obsolete things. Well, I guess I'll go on if you'll let me.
Yeah.
A minute, maybe? Okay, we've got, we've got a kids that have to do a portfolio to graduate. There's no preparation for the portfolio until they finally get to 12th grade. So what is the crash thing? It's not like, here's what I started in ninth grade working on, and I made some progress, but here, I've got to graduate, yeah, and now I got to hurry up and figure out what my portfolio is. Didn't part of the planning of what you did in high school have to do what your portfolio should be about? And should you have to grab it at the last minute and figure out, oh, here I am, graduate me? Or do you want to have something in there that shows that you've been moving toward something? That's not part of it, it's just, give me a portfolio, the hell with it, you know? Okay, so now we've got one more, which is computer literacy. I say that there are more computer literate kids in the school district than there are And I say that taking some cockamamie course, and I taught this course, typing, you know? I think I did a better job teaching keyboarding than they're doing now, but I'm not going, if you're going to make it a requirement, make it a requirement, but don't call it computer literacy. And people actually are forced to take a whole year of computer literacy when they could pass it by some simple exam. Are we fighting for kids' time, or we just want to make them go through hoops? So if I had, I'll come from this, I'd say, okay, let's approve the dug-on thing, let's leave it alone for now because it's got so much redundancy. There's courses in there that are made up to excuse kids from A to G. To excuse them from A to G. Courses, like, why do we have courses other than Algebra 1-2? Shouldn't you pass Algebra 1-2? That's an A to G requirement. There's another course in here that says it's okay to graduate if you take it, but it's not A to G approved. So the bottom line for me is, we keep adding, but we never think about what we're adding. And if we're going to do a good job, we should be studying this board, should be studying what our work product is for kids. And if we keep saying, we're going to do this, and this, and this, and this, and this, and add more and more pages to that book, we're just playing games. We're not really designing a program, and any business that doesn't design their output is really a bad business.
And I know this is an annual thing that we do, but considering our position on A through G requirements, the courses that are in here, I think should be annotated whether they meet the requirement, and-
Which I'll be saying this morning.
So certainly, you know, this is the course of study for the 10-11 school year, and people are already in these courses, but I think it would be good for you to go back and go ahead and start putting which of these courses meet their requirement and annotating it, because I know that when it comes time to sign up for courses again next year, it's going to be too late when this comes to us in September. Because by then, the kids have already signed up, school's already started, and we're, you know, trying to get the horse back in the barn. And so I think it would be a good idea for us to start now, weeding some of those fuzzy math courses out that I used to complain about a lot, but particularly just look at the English Language Arts section, and I didn't see any of them annotated as meeting the A to G requirement. And I know some of them do, but I think it should be annotated, and what we should be approving now, because we just, we passed a resolution, we had a meeting this morning, but tonight you're asking us to pass a course book that doesn't have anything about A to G in the course side of it.
As noted, we are converting the course of study to an online searchable database, and in that database, there will be a flag for each course to indicate whether or not it is an A to G course and in what particular subject area.
And let me say this really quick about that online. I'm not opposed, I think we should take courses online, but we need something in black and white, because what happens when the computers shut down and you can't access the web and you can't get on, business still needs to go on. And it is very frustrating when business stops because we can't get online to do something. So that's why I know we brought one copy of this to the board, but I'm just saying, in that copy, print it out from whatever is going to be online, but that should be part of it.
The online database will be used to generate the PDF or the hard copy next year, so we will have that information.
That's true. Well, one thing, why shouldn't it say, having a list of a whole bunch of courses that don't meet A to G requirements is not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is, why don't we have courses that meet A to G requirements, and that's it? If that's so important, then why are we trying to avoid the idea of providing A to G requirements by putting in alternatives? It shouldn't be a policy decision at all.
These courses, of course, reflect those that you've already approved, that have been brought by the ICC, and so that's what this document reflects right now, again, all the approved courses for the district.
And if I could just share, this morning, the A through G discussion that we had prompted a lot of conversations about this very topic. In fact, we were already discussing how we have certain requirements that are really from 15 to 20 years ago that were in a different time. We even noted that our administrative procedure 4770 has requirements, even though we completed it two years ago, that are currently out of date with our online and with the other things that we're doing towards the future. So, you know, Ron, I can share that we can commit to annotating and noting where we have the A through G as we move toward what Mr. DeBeck is speaking of, having more courses that are designated as A through G that perhaps are already in there, and we are going to have to eliminate courses that perhaps were used from the past for students to not push them forward. And we're also looking at ways to expand courses that are not designated A through G but are not the 15 A through G. So we also have other courses, ASB is one, that is currently not A through G, but a very valuable extracurricular and extra class within the schedule. So we're going to review this, and certainly, it could be streamlined. So we're going to review this, and certainly it could be streamlined.
Ms. Nakamura.
Yeah, I was just going to say that any large organization, this is essentially a policies and procedures manual for academics. So, you know, we've been going through an awful lot of transition. I think putting it online, you know, is a great step forward, if only also because I think that'll help with our transcripts, creating a more uniform, you know, system of monitoring all of that, and then you can download it on your PDF. But, you know, this is something that any large organization has to go through periodically, clean up, and, you know, just develop a system for keeping it updated once it's done. But it's, you know, I, I think we've had an awful lot of changes in the last few years. This is certainly something I, we should be prepared to do at this point in time. I don't really think it's the end of the world, and A to G is an entirely new aspect of that. We just adopted it last year, so I don't think there's any great criticism that should be leveled at anyone for this being not, not up to speed yet. We've been covering an awful lot of ground very quickly, so I'm, I'm impressed that you're actually getting it online, you know, and that it's going to be available that way. I know that's a great sense of frustration, if we can get some uniformity across the district of what's acceptable and what's not. Although I'd be careful about throwing classes out that are safety valves for kids and that make, you know, classes interesting and, or that actually tap into the special background of a particular teacher even. You know, some of those classes can be the most enriching in a student's life. So I would encourage you to, and I'm sure you're way ahead of me on this, but form a committee and, you know, do the review, but it's, I would think it would take at least a year to do it correctly.
It's, it should be an ongoing process.
Exactly.
Shouldn't let it happen like this.
Okay, any further comments or members on this? If not, please vote. Thanks, thanks, Ron. Okay, can we get a, just one motion for F1 and F2?
Some move.
And, okay, please.
What's this for?
Best hour of board meeting, and I'll be.
Oh, sure.
Special education.
Sure, I'll vote for the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, information reports, Mr. DeBeck.
Well, I think I'm going to pass today.
Okay, Ms. Jackson.
Again, I would like to thank staff for all of their hard work. We had a good opening of school last, last week and had a chance to get out and visit a number of schools, able to work through a number of issues that were going on at school sites. My special visit, I had a special visit up to Erickson, and I think they're watching tonight because I'm supposed to give them a special comment. And that special comment for the staff and students there is that I hope y'all have a very happy birthday to those born in the month of September. That is the question to answer tomorrow for their principal when they return to school. But in addition to that, Ms. Nakamura is commenting, we have been making a lot of changes in our district, but they are changes for the good. We are professionals focused on children across the district in every avenue that we have. And while I know it's frustrating sometimes, especially, I know today, yesterday, I was asking a lot of questions for people and, and they were like, "Well, will she please go away?" But I want to thank each and everyone for providing those answers to me. I got most of them, so I only have a few questions left for tonight's meeting.
Right.
Thank you.
Great. Ms. Nakamura.
Yes, I, you know, would like to ask for a moment of silence, actually, here at the meeting. We lost someone in our community, not only in San Diego, but for the county of San Diego. The president of the 9th District PTA, Carolyn Johnson, passed away unexpectedly about a week ago, and it, she's a huge loss, as I said, very unexpected, you can imagine. She's, was president for not only the San Diego Unified School District, but reaching up into Riverside and Imperial Counties and the whole large area. And at any rate, it's, it's a huge loss, leadership vacuum, and, and the PTA being what it is, is filled with leaders and, but sometimes they're very special. A particular one can, can really make a difference for so many families and, and providing leadership throughout an entire region, really. I had the opportunity to work with her regarding the Sacramento Safari that we ran for the PTA and was up in Sacramento with her advocating on behalf of all of our schools in this region last February. And her vision and her leadership and her, her forceful and cheerful personality somehow at the same time will be certainly lost. So if we could have a moment of silence, please. I'd also like to also jump on the Hoover bandwagon and note that there was 80, the 80th anniversary is coming up, there's going to be a special dinner that I'm sure all of us have been invited to. That is something to, for a school to reach its 80th. I've been to the 70th before, but this is the first 80th for the year that I've been a chance to attend. They had their opening of, or their kickoff for school with all of the teachers, and I have to say the cheerleaders were superb. Everyone there was, they had the drum line and, but talking about the, the student achievement was very important, and the focus for the year from the schools and the City Heights Collaborative, that was a good, it's a good, good partnership. But the, also Miramesa Scripps Ranch had their kickoff as well, and I attended that, which was, the cheerleaders there were also wonderful. So, but that was, it was good to see this, the clusters coming together and that they're really starting to, the teachers are just very excited about this new format. Special shout out, finally, also, I'm sorry, all of us have schools that are occasionally in program improvement. Not all of us have schools that get out of program improvement, and so I have, within my area, I'd like a special shout out to Lewis Middle School and to Clay Elementary School for making it out of program improvement. They have to have two years of progress, and it's, it's hard to do, so it's not easy. It's a lot of pressure on the staff and, and these two schools, and we have others within the district, but these are, are within my area. So congratulations to Clay and to Lewis, we're very, very proud of you. Thank you.
Well, I'm also very excited about the beginning of the school year and a lot of the things we're doing in terms of, particularly in terms of community involvement. And I know that persons like Ms. Johnson, there are many others in other parts of the city who have really tirelessly for years, many years after their kids have already gone all the way through school, who are continuing to work as, as positive community members to, to support our schools. And in terms of the, our whole focus on the clusters, the local geographic communities, we're really looking for a lot of input. We're not just saying it's nice to have people involved, we're really expecting it. We have very limited resources. And our best resources, our staff, our parents, and our community, and community members, they really form the, the best resource that we have, and we're looking for a lot of collaboration this year. One of the things we started doing in the last year or two was, which we haven't started yet tonight, at the beginning of the school year, is the student presentation, about 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, which really reminds us of why we're here and what it's all about. In the past, we've seen musical presentations, cheerleading presentations, debate teams, scientific presentations, the whole gamut of what, what is happening in our schools with our students. And my suggestion would be previously, we've done it alternated between the various board members, and I think this year with our cluster emphasis and about 15 geographic clusters that we could alternate between, throughout the school year, between the 15 different clusters in the community, and I think that could be done, certainly with the area superintendents and the collaboration of, of board members in that area to identify one school or one program or one thing to, to highlight your cluster in the course of this school year. I think that's another way to show that we are a very diverse community, but we are also San Diego Unified School District.
Thanks, Dr. Evans. Yeah, two things. I know Dr. Evans had had the opportunity to meet with a group with the League of Women Voters a couple of weeks ago, and then I, I met with them as well. This is a group that's very interested in, in taking a look comprehensively, I think, at the preschool program that we have here in the district, and they're working with an organization, Preschool California. And what I recommended to them is to, is to take a look at the science task force that we put together as a model of a group of people from the community working with some staff from the district, in this case, to, to really examine, what are we doing in our preschool program? Match that against, what are some of the best practices that are going on around the country? Where are the gaps and what can we do to fill those gaps? We know how important, we know how important at the, at the district, the early grades are, you know, kindergarten, first, second grade, but we know that preschool really sets the, sets the stage for that. So, and I think Sid Salazar is going to meet with that group tomorrow, so, yeah, that's great. And I think it'll be a great partnership. I also want to absolutely congratulate every school in this district that's made progress over the last year in their CST scores and their API scores. We've got so many schools that are just making substantial progress. I think, now is this right, I think we have 15 schools that scored, that made 50 points or higher growth in their API?
Fifteen, and I believe five that exited.
That exited program improvement. We heard of some. We also had Garfield Elementary.
Yeah.
Knox Elementary, Encanto.
Yeah. No, it's really, really terrific work, and congratulations to all those schools. Schools that are run by the district, charter schools, we've got just really outstanding public schools in San Diego that are, that are making significant progress. I was at Einstein Elementary and Middle School this morning, charter school in South Park. The middle school grew by 62 points and I think is now the highest performing middle school in the district. But I wanted to especially point out one school in particular in, in my district, in Mid-City Edison Elementary School, which I just encourage everybody to, to learn about if you have a chance to, to visit. Edison Elementary, which is a neighborhood school, so it's not, you know, a school where parents are making a special decision to send their kid, you know, to Edison. Edison's the neighborhood school, 100% of the kids are in the free and reduced lunch program, over 90% of the kids are English language learners. Edison went from two years ago having, I believe, 21% of students scoring proficient in literacy to 62%, a jump of 40 percentage points in two years. And went from, I think, in the low 20s in math to almost 80%. Bernie got a chance to go out and spend some time with Atavka Bastani and her staff and, and put some videos together that I think are on the website, is that correct, Bernie? So I'd, I'd encourage people to really get out there and take a look. We've got amazing success stories in our district. It can be done, every student can learn, no matter what the circumstances are, and I just think we need to celebrate schools like Edison. So, great. We will now move on to item H1, so this is, can we get a motion? Yeah, Declaration of the Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
This is fully qualified?
Fully qualified educators.
Okay, I got, I got a comment on that.
Yep.
Okay, if you look at, what this says is people that don't have the credentials to do what we're asking them to do, period, okay? And I looked down the list to see what those people are, and 200 of them are not certified for CLAD, English Language Certification. And my take on this is, that's our job, to train them. You know, we're saying, and it's easy, the easy excuse is they just say, "Okay, we'll get a waiver, 200 this year, 200 next year, 200 the year after," and we did nothing about it, except if they go to get the CLAD certification, then, then we'll, we'll take credit for that. But it seems to me, and it may be negotiable, I understand all that stuff, that we ought to provide some incentive for people to get them. And we ought to provide the training insertally so that we don't have to go constantly saying, "Well, we just, we're just going to wiggle out of it by filing some kind of paper with the state." The other ones, that, bilingual authorization, only three. I was surprised at that, frankly, but I would think that we would probably need more bilingual instructors than that, especially with the multiple languages we have to serve. And then, if you look down to the next one, Limited Assignment Permiss, you got single subject, but it didn't say what the subjects are. So for data wise, I think that not only the board and everybody else should know that within single subjects, there are subsets that people might want to know, for example, we're short in math or science or, you know, whatever. And so while the form doesn't provide for that, I think the report should. That's all.
Okay.
Just for your information, the emergency CLAD permit does require that the teacher go through the training and complete six semester units of university coursework towards the CLAD permit to achieve that. In the event the teacher does not do that, they will be removed from the classroom as a misassignment.
Well, but we've got 200 that we're saying they don't have to do it.
No, that means there are 200 in the process of doing it.
Can I share a little bit more? Can I share a little bit more?
Okay, well, that number is not different than last year by a lot, I'll tell you that.
Due to recent changes in legislation specifically surrounding the requirements of ROP teachers and career and technical education teachers, they are now required to have a CLAD authorization. Unfortunately, until the beginning of last year, the state of California did not have a legal method for them to do so. That inflated our numbers this year, so we can have those teachers now use the new county option and get the CLAD through that training.
So what you're saying is all of our teachers have to be certified CLAD?
That is correct. In the event that they have an English learner in their classroom, they are required to have an English learner authorization, CLAD or BCLAD.
And no grandfathering?
There is no grandfather.
Fair enough.
Ms. Jackson.
I was just going to comment, and I didn't put it with my questions, and it was a good question to ask because Ms. Waiso did come and share that because I knew as a classroom teacher, in 1998, we would be required to do that. But these 200 people are people that are other in ROP or coming from out of state or other places that would not necessarily have that. I did ask a question also about the language, I said, she didn't have other, like French and other items, and she said she didn't have specific more requests for those particular languages, which is why she didn't, excuse me, why she didn't include those languages. So, thank you.
Sure, certainly.
Okay, no further comments, please vote for those of us who are here. Mr. DeBeck.
I did. I'll do it again.
Didn't show it.
Well, what, what, what you have to do, if you push it.
Very good. Okay, we will move on now to item H2, which is the Resolution Adoption Minigated Negative Declaration for the University City High School Athletic Facilities Improvement Project. Is there a, a comment from the district staff on this one? Mr. Markey?
I thought Mission Bay was next.
No, no.
Good evening, this is a normal process that we invoke when we do these sorts of projects. There was no community comments.
So this one, my understanding was this one moved forward very quickly.
Right, yeah.
Because there were all the different items in the community and so forth, there were no, no objections to anything. That's why it moved through so swiftly.
No objections.
So just very quickly, what, Mission Bay, are they up next?
Does Mission Bay went up next?
Yes.
No, ma'am, that won't be the next one.
Just trying to find out here.
Well, Hoover will be up, and we've, we've got a number in the process, right, there's a series.
Okay, move approval.
Okay, a second.
Ms. DeBeck, is she up?
Sure, why not?
Okay, second, considering you're the other person. Okay, please vote. Okay, that passes 3-0. There was a request to wait on this item to move ahead while some of the members are absent and will be returning, I believe. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Jackson may have some questions on some of the, some items to pull on the superintendent consent agenda.
How do we get there? We didn't skip 803?
Well, because there was a request that we, we wait on those items until some of the other persons have returned.
Oh, okay, well.
So we're not, if we would take next, the superintendent's consent agenda, we would go back to that.
Okay, I'll, I'll be good, yes.
However, if you don't pull any items, this will be very quick, too.
Well, thank you very much for that comment. Then I am, the items that I'm going to pull for consent agenda, I'm not understanding if you have any public comments that are speaking on items, but I'd like to pull item number 53.
Okay.
I like to pull item number 79 and item number 56.
Okay. What we'll do at this point is I'll ask first for the public speaker, and then if there are any other items that board members want to pull after we hear the public speaker, we can do that. On item I-74, we have Jesus Montana.
There he's going. You got the courses thing. That's okay, still, I, I thought it was mixed in with that, but it is.
Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, the board and guests. To a brand new school year, I am Jesus Montana, Vice President of the San Diego Schools Police Officer Association. And I want to first apologize for my farmer's stand, I wasn't thinking about speaking today, but I thought it was important that we do so. On this item, what we have- On this item, what we have is, excuse me, the creation of a communication supervisor. In the report itself, it states something that's not present in it, something that we're not used to. And that is, we're having one of our unions, the Police Officer Association, offer two of its positions for a supervisor. Yes, it is true, it's not a typo, but we at the association believe that the liability that we currently have in our department is too great to overlook. And as an association, we feel that we need a supervisor who has the proper credentials to run a facility, the only facility in this district that runs seven days a week, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. As an example, just last week alone, our communication center handled just over 7,000 phone calls for that period. And a supervisor in the communication center is not just a Monday to Friday, 7 to 3 position. Whenever the communication center is open, they're essentially on duty or on standby because we need assistance at all times. Currently, that's being run by a sergeant who really has no proper training in regards to dispatchers. And I personally, as my experience in the dispatch center, or communication center, is that I was pulled from the field to help backfill our current vacancies and also to help restructure our communication center. I don't want to go back, to tell you the truth. It takes a lot of training and dedication, and the people that we have in there, we hire, you know, they want to be there, and they have the proper training, and we need someone with that same type of training to be in there. And we so hardly believe that we need to give up two of our positions in order to pay for this one supervisor. And at the same time, I believe, if I remember correctly, the district will also save money in a time where we need the money, to the tune of, I believe, 15,000?
I'll speak to that when you get done.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, just, could you just tell us, I know you've put in time here, but what exactly are you proposing?
We are proposing that we take two of our community service positions and eliminate those two positions, and then bring in a school police communication supervisor in his place. Essentially transfer the funds from those two positions into that one, is what we're proposing.
Let me share comments first, okay? Because that's why you came to speak, because I asked a question about that. It's one of my questions that I asked.
Well, actually, I had a plan before that.
Thank you.
Only because, you know, when you read in the paper saying that, is it true that one of our units is giving up their positions for a supervisor position, that it is not a typo? It is in fact true. We are supporting that, and we are strongly and highly recommending that we move forward with it.
Okay, my concern with the positions, all of them in that particular item, is the fact that we are bringing people here to the exit of the work when our schools have needs. In that particular instance, we had schools, at least three that I knew of, that needed community service officers. And I had a hard time trying to justify me approving a position for the office over here when I have schools that may be in lockdown and need security on campus that we were not getting funding for, not getting people for. My understanding with Chief Brown is that we have worked it out so that it was a different, I guess, different people working on it, but we have worked it out so that some of those schools, at least one or two of them, will now have the support that they need during the school day. It is important, the board's mission statement, or our concern is that we will have safe schools.
Yes.
And it's okay to have a dispatcher up here supervising this, but if the schools aren't safe, then people aren't going to come to our schools. Therefore, we won't have enrollment. Therefore, we have no need at all for security, okay? So we need to make sure that our schools are safe. But we've worked it out, so I'm better now. Thank you.
And if I may ask, Ms. DeBak? Yes, we do need the personnel in the field. I, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with you. But right now, because we don't have the proper type of supervisor to train our dispatchers, we're actually pulling people from the field to work in there to either backfill or train. So myself being in there for a year and a half.
Mr. DeBak?
Well, you know, policing today is incident-based, and a school's safe because there's a dispatcher that can get the people that are necessary to the place where the action is. To have people standing around who are community service officers in schools where there isn't any problem is a resource issue for me. I'm going to say it, you know, I don't want to argue with you, Sheila, I know the difference.
You even know the schools, John, so you can't say that. When you have schools in lockdown, you cannot say they don't need support.
Why are you interrupting me?
Because you're saying a general statement about schools that you don't know about.
Well, then, take your turn. I'm trying to point out that there is time when schools need added resources, and a dispatcher will get them there. I have seen times, and the police guys will know it better, and I've been in schools for a whole lot of time in my life, 36 years actually, where a single community service officer needed help. That help doesn't come if you don't have a dispatcher. And when the people that are doing the work recommend that they give up some of their own in order to get a dispatcher to help them do their job, I'm not one to object to it on the basis of some kind of need for a presence walking around and, you know, being the security for a school. So I understand there's a resource problem. I will not disagree with the concept that there is an advantage to having a presence of a community service officer in some of the schools that I work for, and many of them in your district, by the way, most of them. But the problem is that we are in a resource situation, and if we need to get a mobilization of a lot of people to a place where there's trouble, the only way to do that is with a dispatcher, so I'm going to support it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Montana.
Thank you.
In terms of items, there are no other public speakers. Items that board members want to pull, we have I-53, I-79, and I-56. Are there any others?
Yeah, I got one, but you want me to find it? You know, it's like, how do you, yeah, okay, it's really a follow-up because we've done this before, but it's I-37 and 8.
I-37 and I-
Daryl will understand.
I-38.
We have a motion for approval of the rest?
Well, I could just, all I really want to do is talk about it and see if we've got consensus up here.
Okay, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Then I can go back into the pile, because it's not like I don't want to oppose it. It's what I want to do is make sure we understand each other.
Good, I agree. So I-37 and 38.
In the past, on I-37 and I-38, in the past, we've had, we had a discussion about whether other schools within the district could use the same services that we're all talking about here, online courses. And I believe the board's consensus at that time was yes, that it shouldn't be isolated to I High or to a virtual high school, but it should be something that all the schools in the district that are prepared to take advantage of can do. If that's the understanding, then I'm not going to pull it, I just basically want to support it. But I don't want little individual pieces coming in where, well, you didn't do that then. So I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the policy is, if we're going to do online credit support for kids, that every school in the district should have that option to do it.
I can speak that yes, that is correct, that this particular item offers online to all high schools.
Thank you.
All right, and in the same vein, I'd just like to make a couple of comments on items without pulling them also. On I-28, which is La Jolla Y and the PE program for Torrey Pines, which is some donated funds, I just want to say we need to really encourage this type of thing where we're using various community facilities in conjunction when a public school is across the street from another facility, so we're not duplicating funds. So I think that's to be commended on top of that, it's donated-
I will comment on that, too.
Donated funds. You want to comment on that?
Sure. Okay, you get into, this is, I'm not against what you said.
Okay.
But you get into a situation where you have to decide whose resources are going to be used. And I'll use an example because it won't be yours. I got an agreement with Peninsula Y to provide, because they wanted to use our parking lot at Correa, for them to provide pool access for our kids at Correa so they could get swimming as a part of their physical education instruction. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened. And the reason is because the Peninsula Y wanted us to provide the instruction. So now, if we get mixed things like this going on, where one Y is doing, let's say, providing instruction for whatever, and another Y isn't, then I think we've got some problems about what we call about policies of community involvement. See, and what I've been advocating for, for a long time on this issue, is that when Correa replaces their physical education teacher, sooner or later there's going to be one, that they find a water-qualified person so they can provide the instruction at a facility that I've already gone and guaranteed they can use. Okay? So when we get into this cross-eye, who's going to do it, whatever, I'm assuming that you're saying that the Y is going to provide physical education instruction.
I actually don't know that detail.
Well, see, but that's an important point.
I was understanding that it was for the facility.
That's an important point, because there are some staff people that should be doing the supervision of kids.
Sure.
And there's a liability question on who is responsible for the kids while they're at the Y. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, good. And then just a brief comment on I-77 and 78. We are very in tight budget times, and I'm just happy to see that we have on there that we are selling some old buses and producing cash, which can actually be used in our general fund in these very tight budget times. So at that, at this point then, we have three items, 53, 79, and 56. Was there a motion to approve all the others? Okay, second? Mr. DeBak? You second it? Okay, please vote. Okay, that passes 3-0. Okay, now let's go to items that were pulled by board member Jackson, item I-53.
Okay, the first item, I-53, I, we asked that we pulled this, we had a discussion back in December, trying to find a way to generate some income from people that are bidding on jobs from us. And I think this is continuing in the same line that we are now, and I think we need to look at things doing a little bit differently for the district. So I cannot support this item as it is written. I think we can have a discussion about it and make it better. And so I would like to have it scheduled for the next board meeting, if at all possible.
So what, and the reason, I'm just, I'm checking on this. And the reason that you want to have it delayed again is what?
Is we were having a discussion about how to generate more income from the district, for the district, and one of the things was that rather than just putting out our bids for free, that the people that actually get awarded bids pay a small percentage to be notified about the bids, rather than just doing it for free to generate revenue for the district.
Is there a comment from staff on this item, Mr. Stover?
Yes, we did do a competitive bid for this particular item, including those companies that offer rebates to the district for their services. The panel that was put together to review, the bids reviewed them all and made the recommendation not to go with those particular companies for a variety of reasons. Art Hamby's here, can speak to it more specifically. But the two companies, BidSync and Envia, were the recommendation of the committee by a fairly wide margin, and that's why we bring them forward to you tonight as a way to do our online soliciting of bids.
There were 10 proposals received in response to the RFP for this. The evaluation committee was made up of two members of district staff, one member of the procurement department of the city of San Diego, and one member representing the county office of education. The proposals were scored accordingly, and as Mr. Stover has said, the committee looked at the various aspects of what was submitted in the proposals. The proposals did give each proposer the ability to be creative and to present options which that could be considered by the district. At the end of the day, the committee determined that it was in the best interest of this district to award a contract to a company where there was no cost at all, replicating what the district has experienced for the past five years in the advertising of our bids and solicitations. There has been no out-of-pocket cost by the district during that time.
Okay, I will just say this, I will not support this because the system that we have now, and we've had a long discussion about this, does not help small businesses. Small businesses that come in don't have time to search through things, trying to find the bids for the district. And it's hard for them to compete with people, large businesses, that have staff that do this all day long, they're on the line looking. And so when we went through this several years ago, and we went to DemandStar on our online process, and I asked them, I said, how are we going to make sure that we protect our small businesses? The district staff assured me that we have a person to do outreach, and they did hire a person to do outreach. But the concern that I have, and I will share that publicly, continually, is that we are not reaching the small business, our disabled veterans, to the tune that we shared. We are getting better, because I'm always calling and asking questions, so I understand that we're getting better. But I think that when we continue doing business, so you say it's the same company we have for the last five years, and unless the people are actually just looking at San Diego Unified, it charges them. And so, and I have a problem with that. You know this is going to pass, but I cannot support it because I really believe that we can do a better job of helping our small businesses in our community. And we, you know, we've been on this road before, and we'll probably go down it again, but I cannot support this.
Okay, as a practical matter, and I just see a fourth important member here, because I was going to say, whatever Ms. Jackson's saying goes with three of us.
That won't happen, but...
So what, let me just ask you, Ms. Jackson, in terms of what, if this is not approved at this point, what are you hoping that staff would do in the meantime?
Well, we are still putting out bids. I think the contract is in effect till when, this month? Is that what's coming now in September? Because the contract runs out in September, which only makes me a little bit more concerned because we saw discussion last December. And so rather than getting this to us in a timely manner, that we could have options if we don't approve this now, we have to approve it by the next board meeting in order for our online contracting opportunities not to run out. And again, that's a process that, you know, we've had before, too. Bringing things at the last minute where we don't have an option, so really, Mr. Evans, we do not have an option, but to accept the recommendation, I'm just not going to support it.
If I could, let me ask Art to comment on two things. Why did half, we had a four-member review board, and two of them were outside of the district, one from the city and one from the county office. Why by a wide margin did we recommend this particular firm? And can you comment on Ms. Jackson's concern about outreach to the community, which is a very important one?
We had, in the evaluation process, first of all, we wanted to, because of the nature of this, we wanted to bring in procurement people that could look at this objectively in addition to the district staff that was on it. So we did invite somebody from the city who did not have, the city does not have a similar type of system now, so they had no dog in the race, horse in the race, I'll say. Same with the county office of education, they're not using an automated system like this. So they were, both of those parties were neutral in the evaluation process. The scoring, Envia, the recommended vendor tonight, scored 88 points in the evaluation. The scores went down from there with the lowest ranks scorer or submitter's getting 63 points. So there was quite a spread in that part of the evaluation. One of the conditions that we now have and will continue into the new contract is that a firm can register at no cost for information from San Diego Unified School District only. So if they come in and they sign up to get ours without getting any other bids from any other governmental agencies across the country or in the region, then there's no cost for that initial setup. There would be, if they wanted to broaden their base and look at solicitations from other parts of the country, then they would have to subscribe to a subscription service based on a fixed fee. But for us, for somebody coming in just for us alone, then there's no cost to that company.
Okay, I will-
This is, if I can paraphrase this, if I might speak, of course, it sounds like it's paid a bid. And I'm uncomfortable with that. I mean, I'm not even sure that I agree with the business model. You know, maybe you can explain to me why we need to have a firm between us and our bidders, and what advantage to us it is. You know, it's like, okay- You know, you know, it's like, okay, ABC Companies, all these different companies, Ada, whatever, finds this company, which I don't even want to give a name, you got some here, and that, and they join that club in order to bid for city schools. Well, why? Why don't they just bid for city schools? If they're local buyers or local providers, and they paying attention to the announcements of our bids, which we do, then they, they grab their pencil, and they say, "I sell that stuff," and I, then they, and they submit a bid. Well, I can understand that, but to join some other club to bid? I don't know what that model does for, for me as a school district, because they're going to put in that bid the cost of being in that club. You know, there's no advantage that I can see. The business model makes no sense to me unless it's some, well, I don't even want to get into what the possibilities are because there are a lot of them. Okay? But it looks to me like a model that I can't subscribe to. And I don't care if you go low bid for the club, that's not the point. The low bid should be for what we buy, not for being in the club or which club we're going to have. Anybody can give you a membership for a club that's free as long as they get to charge whatever they want to the people that join. So, you know, for me, all I'm doing is enabling some guy to say, "Yeah, I'm your, I'm your, the only source where you can do business with city schools has come to me, and, but you got to join for 50 bucks, 100 bucks, or 500 bucks." I don't know what the numbers are, but I don't see us being the facilitator of those kind of people. I'm not going to vote for it.
Mr. Stover was going to comment.
The, the vendors typically would sign up with Onvia to be informed of bid opportunities that they might not be aware of. They, they're, what they do is they do pay to, to sign up, and in exchange for that, then Onvia will make them aware of bids in their area of expertise that happen all across the, the United States or in a designated area should they desire. They, they are certainly allowed to bid on our products, on our services, without going through Onvia. They can do it directly. What they can, what, what it does for them is it makes them aware of bid opportunities that they would have no other, no other manner or method of being aware of, because you can't subscribe to every paper from every, every town in America. So it is an information source for the vendor. They're aware that San Diego now has this opportunity. It, it is to our benefit for them to, to put in their bid through the Onvia system because it provides uniformity real time, but they do not have to do that in order to bid. They can find out locally that we have that bid opportunity, they can find out in the paper, and they can submit their bids without going through that. So it's a reference information source for the vendors to be made available of opportunities that exist all across the country.
So they do not have to, they do not have to go through Onvia at all, they can do it directly with us, but Onvia serves as, we provide this information to them, which gets the word out to a lot more people. Is that, that's what we get from it.
It's a national subscription service, basically.
And that's what we get, that's the benefit to us.
We get many more vendors in that, in that way.
Right.
Now, the challenge is, I, because I've met with some of these folks, is to, from a local basis, to get more of our local vendors, get more of our folks that are here, and we did not find any system, any company that we felt would help us facilitate that greater than the efforts that we're doing now.
If you, if you had a common practice of bid announcements in the daily transcript, and everybody in this community knew it, or any other, I don't care what paper you pick, but the idea that somebody is going to say, "I'm going to give you an opportunity to bid on San Diego City Schools, and I'm the way you find that out," I'm, I'm not going there. You know, you can't, you haven't sold me, I'm just not going to vote for it.
We do advertise as required by ed code in the San Diego Daily, Daily Transcript, so anyone can look there, see that we have a bid on the street, and then if they don't want to use Onvia at all, they can call us up and say, "Would you send us a bid in five years?" We've had one or two companies come in and want to do that. The way the, the system works is that, you're correct, there is an email that is sent out. Right now, we have, I think, well over, I think there's over 2,200 different vendors that are registered in the current system to get a notification anytime we will, we were to purchase a good or a service or a commodity, whatever. So when we upload it into the system, that email goes out in the middle of the night, those companies then can go in online, download the bid documents electronically, and begin to prepare a response.
But the emails going out, why do we need the company omniums or whatever it is? I just, you know, certainly, and, and I hate to belabor this, and we've had several conversations, it's not about a single entity, what it is about, and, and, you know, our small business people and people, they can't live off of work from San Diego Unified. We have a terrible record with small businesses. They, they get a job from us, they have to put up so much money, they don't get paid on, on time, some of them, you know, get struck out, get, they run around, get the runaround. So it's hard for them to just live off of what they, they get from San Diego Unified. So they have to apply to other areas, to the city, to the county, and, which was why initially when we brought up this online, this nationwide company, the concern was how would that help our small businesses locally? They don't always have the time to come home after a long day and sit and go through the transcript. That was the other concern. So the question was, and if you have the item with the emails going out, if, if we have that capacity to do it ourselves, then I'm okay with that.
That's Onvia, I believe, not us.
Well, but, but, not us, but then, but the thing is that we need to have something that's going to help our, our small businesses, and I'm, it's just not happening. In my six years here, it's only a smidgen better than it was when I started this conversation. And it's frustrating for me, Art, it's just frustrating. But I've voted already, so...
I don't believe there was a motion yet on that particular item.
You got two no votes, it doesn't look like it's going to pass.
It doesn't look like it's going to go. Can I just ask, Art, have you done any analysis of, if the idea is to increase the bidder pool and therefore to bring in lower bids and save money? I mean, is there any analysis of, you know, what we would save as, as a result of doing that?
We see, I mean typically, years of experience looking at this, if you send out a notification by an email to 100 different companies, you'll probably have an interest in about 80, 20% of them, 80% will look at it but not, not respond, not even download the documents. So then you're into that, that 10 to 20% that do have an interest that will download the documents. If it's in their area of expertise, their book of business, then typically, you know, we will get a response to that. I used to do this myself years ago in a department without using the automation that, that this type of company would bring to us. Just maintaining the email addresses and the fax numbers and all those types of things is, is people-intensive. I had over, over one FTE, about 1.75 FTEs, doing nothing but maintaining that address list, the emails, the faxes, company moves, change their addresses, all those types of things. So going to an automated system where they self-service their account information has terrific benefits to us, and always having that information current on their side by their own efforts.
Well, we can't really take any action on that particular one. And then the other item was 79?
Let me do them in order...
56, yeah.
56, I'm sorry.
Or I do 56 next. And certainly I want to thank Mr. Lagasse for providing the agreement that we have here with Microsoft. I, I had some concerns, and I still have some concerns. As I look at the agreement, and I know that it's reviewed by legal, I can agree with the written case study part of it and the video case part, study part of it. What I can agree with is the press release, the testimonial advertisement, and the reference customer. And one of the reasons, and I shared with Mrs. Lagasse earlier, is that we pay for our, our items with Microsoft. We negotiate that, and I think Art does a pretty good job of negotiating, working out that for us. And I don't see, my question that I sent out to the staff was, how does this benefit the district? And I kind of see this as kind of what's part of the item that we skipped, the advertisement, we asked for the testimonial advertisement piece. So I can support this contract with those last three pieces not part of it, but I don't know what that does for our IT department.
Thank you for allowing me to address this. I think that, you know, we can make some adjustments to this. I think the one thing that would be important to try to keep intact is the press release. This is a good opportunity for us to be able to tell our story about what we've learned in year one with I-21 and the transformation of our classrooms, and I think it will help us get national exposure that we otherwise not, otherwise may not have. And just getting people to understand the transformation that San Diego Unified is undertaking is difficult locally, much less on a national level. So we could benefit from this by keeping the press release component of this intact.
So you would suggest that you would, according to what Ms. Jackson was saying, eliminating the testimonial advertisement and the reference customer, that there wouldn't be any particular benefit to us in, in doing that?
I, I don't think we'd have a problem taking those off.
To DeBak.
Sure. I guess the question is, what do we get? Publicity? You know, I mean, national attaboys. You know, if I got a break on Microsoft software or something, I mean, we do, we negotiate that because we're a big customer. But then, to then turn around and say, "But now, we're going to give you access to our place, and you get to brag about us." And gosh, what do we get? We get national exposure about how good we are, we know that. Now, you know, I want to see something happen for kids. I want to have, you know, a few more ways for kids to get to the internet, I want a few more, you know, broadband whatevers or something, or, or, you know, but I don't honestly see this as a license to give them the right to enter our facilities and publicize their activities and, and use it for sales purposes. That's what I see it for. And I'm a marketer, maybe that's why I see it that way. You know, and that's my major, but, you know, the point of it is, unless I get something forgiving, I don't really feel that comfortable about letting people walk around and run their video cameras or take testimonials, because, you know, we're, we're busy doing our business, we don't need interference from them. That's just the way I feel. Until I can see what they will do for us in writing, I'm not willing to give them permission to come in here and do stuff for them.
Would it be acceptable if we quantify some of the partnership relations that this will support and bring it back to you?
What I would say is this, I know what we're doing now with Microsoft, so what we get different is what I'm talking about.
Right.
I don't want, you know, like, so they give us a laptop for a dime less, or I don't care, but those aren't the things I'm talking about. I'm talking about, if we do this, what significant things happen to improve instruction for kids in San Diego? What does that partnership come to? You know, and it's the bottom line for me is, what do we get? What do we get? The kids that San Diego get for this? And if we don't, then I'm not, I'm not agreeing.
I, I think we can come back and quantify.
You can come back with that information.
Figure it out.
That seems reasonable.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Approach the table.
And then the last item is yours as well, if you could just, number, item number 79, if you could just... My only concern with item 79, I think, when I wrote the question, and I had to read the question again because that's the only way it made sense to me.
PeopleSoft, yeah.
Well, this was, no, this was a different company, this is Empowering Solutions.
Oh, I know, but it's PeopleSoft's modification.
And, and so they're writing reports, and so the understanding was that they help write a system, they have to generate reports for us.
So their original agreement with the district was to convert our position control processes. Their agreement did not include writing reports to pull out that data, and much of that report definition needed to be defined after they completed the process.
Okay, so I guess my question is, now that, I mean, I, okay, so this only report, my question was, why, why can't our staff now do that generation of reports? But I think what you're saying is this is another program they need to write in order for us to be able to create those reports.
And, yeah, go ahead.
And after that, will we have to continue to use them on and on and on? Is this a continual thing?
This isn't continual, this is to help us, A, get up to speed with the changes that they've made to our system, and to also produce reports that are needed by the finance office, budget, and, and all the departments that are trying to get this data much quicker.
And then teach us how to create those, those reports in the future?
Yeah, we will be able to do it in the future.
All right, very good.
And we could probably do it now, but we don't have the resources to get it done as quickly.
Mr. DeBak.
Okay, so PeopleSoft modules don't have the capability of doing this at all, and somebody has to come in and rewrite code or whatever to get the reports we want, because we're designing the kind of reports we want. The argument could be that when we bought PeopleSoft, didn't they lead us to believe that we're going to get position control as one of the modules?
Absolutely, and it was how we chose to deploy PeopleSoft. We've kind of gone through this conversation about the whole need to convert from one to many to a one-to-one position solution. When we deployed PeopleSoft years back, we deployed it with a one-to-many solution, and so everything was written around that. That essentially negated what the equivalent of position control was. We, we got so far deep into that practice and process, we needed to get a system, the system to be converted back to what it would have originally probably should have been deployed as.
Okay, but then, okay, so it's over fixing something we didn't, we didn't anticipate. But let me go to the next question, which is still a follow-up. Who best knows how to modify PeopleSoft? Is it Empower or is it PeopleSoft? And why are we coming forward with some kind of recommendation for a modification of PeopleSoft to accomplish what we want? Because they have a vested interest in future business licensing to see to it that they can deliver a product for school districts.
It's, it's actually Oracle who owns PeopleSoft. When we went out to RFP, Oracle responded competitively with Empower and a number of others. They were about four times the cost, if I recall. I would have to look it up, but it's significantly higher than what the Empower contractors could do the same work for.
And Empower will guarantee, as a part of this contract, that the interface will be seamless and, and will work. Because if they don't, then I got to have another 40 grand plus to fix the fix, and I don't want to do that.
We've put a scope of work around this, these reports, so they're clearly defined. There is some flexibility in changing those as we develop them, and then we present them to the customers.
Let me get, let me get to this. I've been, I've been in some businesses where change orders cost you a bundle.
Yeah.
This is a change order. It may be disguised as software modification, but it's still a change order. So what I want to find out before we ever get to this, if we got a 39-250 contract, are we going to get deliverables that we want and that these people can use and give us the information we need in real time or not?
We are going to get the deliverables for the position control reports.
Then I'll, I'll be around to find out if it's true or not.
Yeah.
Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, that completes the consensus, and now Mr. Barrera can take over for going back on the agenda to...
Item 3.
So how soon do we get position control data? They're fixing it.
We did H2. We did the negative, negative. Yeah, okay. Okay, thank, thank you, Dr. Evans. Item H3 is, this is the amendment to the district policy around advertising sponsorships. Mr. Ronerson.
Board members of President Barrera and trustees, thank you for listening to this presentation tonight. Back in January, we had a brief discussion about the potentials for advertising sponsorships to raise revenues for the district. And at that point, you directed the superintendent and myself to go out and look at where this is being done, to develop a policy and come back to your board. And that's what we are before you tonight with amendment to a current policy that you have that outlines an advertising sponsorship program. This really is an emerging trend that we can talk about this evening. There are several members of the public to talk, and some companies who do this for other school districts around the country that I think you'll find their testimony interesting. The questions that I want to address for you tonight are as follows. First of all, can this policy provide a carefully controlled and managed way to have advertising... First of all, can this policy provide a carefully controlled and managed way to have advertising sponsorships that are appropriate for school district websites and facilities? And does the policy provide the control and the limitations that we need as a school district to run that advertising program? What are the revenue potentials and how do we determine that? And can we do this with current staff? First of all, I want to point out that there are many school districts around the nation that are initiating programs like this. It is an emerging trend as school districts are facing more and more budget deficits to look at revenue. And we heard this from the community when we did our Budget Town Hall meetings last year. And the community asked us, the district and the board, why don't you look for other sources of revenues? And that's why we're before you. One of the leading districts in the nation is Orange County Public Schools in Florida. They have, they're a similar district to ours, 175,000 students. And last year, in their first year of the program, they generated $170,000 in advertising revenue from both websites and school sites. And they're continuing that program, very satisfied with it. I provided the board with some other samples of policies. Here locally, the San Diego County Office of Education has initiated a policy to look for sponsorships. Sweetwater Union recently approved a policy, Miami Dade in Florida, and Santa Rosa in the Bay Area. You have a current policy about advertising that's very out of date. It was actually developed in 1988, updated in 2008, and really is limited to the distribution of information. This takes that old policy and expands on it so that we can control a program to bring in revenue through advertising sponsorships on district websites and on middle and high school facilities only. And I took the feedback I got from your board last time, and we did not include elementary sites in this policy. So the purpose of the policy is to allow us to have a program that we can have ad sponsorships. And I use the word advertising sponsorships very purposefully in that we want companies to sponsor education programs with messages that provide revenues for our local schools that schools would keep and the district. The policy sets specific content limits. We, the district, have complete control over what each sponsorship ad says, how it looks, and we have to approve it. And the policy outlines an approval process through the superintendent to do that and what's allowed and what's not allowed. So it gives the district full approval rights. It also sets up policy so that our schools would share in the revenue, 80% of the revenue generated at the school site would stay there. So, and for managing it centrally, the district general fund would keep only 20% of it. And it really provides an important role for principals to decide whether or not they want their school in or out of the program, approval rights of where the ads go on their One of the things that I did in March and early April was actually do an online survey with a student at USD who was doing a graduate study of our principals. And we sent a web survey to all of our principals and vice principals. We got 75 responses back. And I just want to highlight, and I've shared the survey with you, I just want to highlight a couple of the results. When we ask if principals of advertising should be allowed with oversight and district guidelines, 75% of our principals said they agreed with that statement, and 9% said they were neutral. We only had 16% who disagreed. Only 11% of our principals felt that academic performance would be negatively affected by advertising. And less than 20% of our principals believed that an advertising program would distract from learning. So that's what our educational professionals are saying. 80% of them supported website ads. And there was a lower level of support for elementary school ads, which kind of supports our recommendation to exclude elementary schools from this policy. Your approval of this policy tonight would just be a first step. It would direct staff then to move forward with seeking an outside company at no cost to the district on a commission basis. We would do an RFP, and there are several companies I'll mention in a minute, and some are here tonight to speak to you, to bring us the external resources and the expertise that we don't have internally, to seek out national advertisers, quality advertisements, and to run that program for us. So we would do an RFP, and then we would come back to your board with a recommendation on who that would be and what that program would be. The vendor's responsibilities would be to develop a district plan for us with the website as the first priority, and then identifying what kind of inventory and location should be part of it. And then they would be responsible for soliciting and managing those sponsors with our approval per the policy, and to manage the payment, really to reduce the workload and the demands on my staff. So far, during that six months since you directed us to go out, we've been contacted by many companies who are starting to do this for school districts around the country. Here locally, a company named For Benefit in San Diego, Polaris Media, Vensite, these are all local companies, Education Funding Partners from Denver, For Visual Media Group from Oceanside, the Orlando group is Tebow Sports Marketing, and our own website company, School Wires, is now starting to do this for school districts. Our revenue goals would be to at least generate about $100,000 a year off of our websites. And then as we move that into school district websites, we would share that with school districts. And to have a program where each school district, from what companies have told us, we can generate $10,000, $20,000 a year per school site from this program. Here's just a shot of where on our district website we could be placing advertisements. Here's the food service page. And again, this is a photograph I received from one of the vendors of different types of ads that could go on school sites. So the question about, does this policy give us a way to control and manage an advertising sponsorship program? We believe the answer is yes. It excludes elementary schools. There's a specific statement in the policy that we would give priority to educational and health messages in ads, and that the policy would benefit our schools by generating significant revenue this year and in years ahead. Does it provide the control and the limitations on advertising? We believe yes because of the specific content aspects in it. We have control over the approval of all sponsorships and content, and we've given principals a real role in approving and controlling any ads that are placed on their sites. We believe that we can generate in excess of $100,000 on our own district website, even more than that when we include school district websites of $5,000 and $10,000 annually, and revenues in excess of $10,000 a year for participating school sites. Now, once we go out to a vendor, we ask them to look at inventory. When I come back to you at the next meeting, should you approve the policy, I'll have more detail for you once we have somebody actually look and put together a plan for us through the RFP process. We can't do this with current staff. We have very limited staff in communications and myself, and we need the experience and a vendor who can go out to national quality advertisers and bring proposals into the district for sponsorships that we can consider. It would be a cost, no-cost program where they would share in the commissions from the placement of ads, so it wouldn't be a cost to the district, and they would actually manage the solicitations for sponsorships and bring those to us. As I said, there are members of the public here to speak and some companies who have experience, and I think would be helpful for the board to hear from them because that might generate some additional questions in addition to my presentation. Then I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay, thanks, Bernie. We're going to go to a public comment first. So we've got Deirdre Kleskey, Miki Freeman, Kelly Wood, Elena McCollum, Brandon Choice. Please, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Deirdre Kleskey, and I'm the parent of two teenage girls in the district. I'm here to recommend that our school board adopt an advertising and sponsorship policy that does not promote unhealthy foods and beverages. Districts throughout the state have done this. 23 of our 42 districts have included this language in their own wellness policies. We know that exposure to marketing increases consumption of unhealthy products. Given the escalating obesity crisis among our youth, it's important that schools do not participate in this type of marketing. Food and beverage companies spend at least $10 billion a year on advertising targeting children and youth, and the majority of these products are high in calories, sugar, fat, and low in nutrients. Even if the ads don't specifically promote an unhealthy food or beverage, our schools shouldn't let these corporations influence our children by, for example, putting Pepsi logos on drinking cups or allowing M&M candy counting game materials in classrooms. A healthy message from a fast food corporation is really just selling obesity to our children. Schools are meant to serve as positive role models to the students who are effectively a captive audience when they're at school. Schools need to promote health and shouldn't be helping corporations market unhealthy products. Healthy kids do better in school. So I encourage the board to adopt a policy that does not allow food and beverage companies to promote unhealthy products to our students. I have a fact sheet on the subject from the Public Health Institute and sample advertising policy from the California School Boards Association to help our school board be part of the solution and just say no to advertising unhealthy foods and beverages. Thank you.
Thank you, Deirdre.
Hi, I'm Miki Freeman. I am president and CEO of Education Funding Partners based in Denver, Colorado. I am former president of Outward Bound Wilderness and chief operating officer. We serve 75,000 people a year with experiential and public education and a former president of School Pop, which raised over $200 million for schools and nonprofits as a social enterprise. I'm here today to thank you, first of all, for having us, and second, for considering this. We're talking to several dozen school districts, major, largest 100 public school districts across the country who are actively considering doing exactly what you're doing tonight. Many of them have already passed formal advertising policy, some of them are in the process of doing that. Many of them are actually in the RFP or RFI process. We think that there is a way to have education-friendly and healthy alternatives. We agree that we should not have bad brands, if you will. However, we think that education is a corporate responsibility. This is their future workforce, and we think that there is a strong interest in sponsoring major public school districts in an appropriate, education-friendly, responsible way. Our backgrounds at Education Funding Partners are both on the education side and in the marketing side. We know how to package value inventories to maximize what you can get for those properties. All properties would be 100% in your discretion, to support a brand or not. Any message would always be approved before it was ever executed on, and the district would remain, or retain, rather, 85% of all the sponsorship funds that are generated with a 15% agency fee going to us for managing the inventory, the valuation, the sales, the execution, and the signage related to all those branding naming and other advertising sponsorship rights. We think that there is a very simple process by which you could launch this. When you do the RFP, right afterwards, we would come in and do a formal evaluation of whichever properties you wanted to put in front of us. It could be all high schools, it could be all middle schools. It could be venues like cafeterias, athletic stadiums, auditoriums, parking lots. You can do communications. There's ways to slice it by venue so that you can start doing this without having to totally throw yourselves in headfirst. There's ways to prototype this and test it with you so you can see what it's like before you have to bite off everything. And then we would manage the relationship with the corporate sponsors themselves. There's no upfront cost to the district. There are soft costs, of course, of having somebody on point for us like Bernie to help manage our relationship with the district and to give us access to the schools that choose to participate. But there'd be no other costs. I think there's a great opportunity with such a huge budget shortfall to try some creative revenue generation that is very much in your control in terms of the message and the content with a partner that knows how to get that done. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Wood, and I'm the principal owner of For Benefit, a local marketing firm here in San Diego. I'm also the mother of two children attending San Diego Unified School District Elementary Schools. And I'm here tonight to encourage you to pass the advertising sponsorship policy. I've been working with the San Diego County Office of Education for 20 months and have been very successful in generating mutually beneficial corporate sponsor, or corporate social responsible advertising revenues and sponsorship revenues for the county office with partners like Kaiser Permanente, Henry's Farmers Market, and Target Incorporated. And recently have been contracted also by the Orange County and Santa Cruz Departments of Education to employ the same services. And I agree with both of the speakers before me on establishing a policy, which I think Bernie has presented tonight, that will protect the students and our community from inappropriate messaging. And the success that I've had in the last 20 months, the county office has proven examples of how pulling together mutual and collaborative partnerships can not only bring real cash revenue and additional in-kind services, but also provide, you know, expanded services and programs that truly benefit the students.
Thank you to the school board. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Elena McCollum. I'm a private citizen and, as of last week, the mother of a student in the school district. She just started kindergarten this past week. So I suppose I'm not directly a stakeholder in the sense that elementary schools are excluded. But I must say, and I'll ask you to forgive me if my remarks are not very well prepared. I learned of this only a few hours ago, and so I haven't had really any time to prepare in the middle of the workday, but I was alarmed. And I see that this is far along the path. And I guess the reason for my alarm is that I really must make a broad appeal to the board to make a strong stand against the creeping presence of commercial interests in our schools. Public schools, like public parks, are part of the shrinking commercial-free space in modern life. Children are the most vulnerable members of our society, or among the most vulnerable, who could be more vulnerable than children, and they deserve to be protected from advertising dollars being aimed at them, which is already present really since birth with branded diapers and the plethora of advertising that we see in commercial television aimed at preschoolers and even infants, really. A few statistics, 67.2% of foods advertised in schools are nutritionally deficient. This according to a publication in the Annals of the American Academy of Political and Social Sciences, obviously a peer-reviewed journal. And I sympathize with the need to raise money for schools, but I also question what kind of a message we're sending our children when we open them up to this sort of advertising. And if there's not enough money for education, and again, I want to be united with the schools as a parent and as a citizen, as the daughter of a retired public school teacher, then that's a problem to be resolved in the public arena, to be addressed in the public arena. So I really make this a strong appeal. On a more hopeful note, legislation has been introduced elsewhere in Massachusetts, in Vermont, to limit this sort of advertising. And again, I would have liked to have made more specific and directed remarks, but this is all the time that was available to me. And I appeal to you to consider this very seriously. I guess one last thing, trying to tailor my remarks to the content that was already presented. If elementary schools are being excluded, then, I mean, that really, there's some kind of an admission there that there's, if this has to be hedged around with all sorts of precautions about control of the content, then that signals to me that this is a very serious matter indeed. And really, we're exposing our 11-year-olds already in middle school. This doesn't seem right to me. Thank you very much indeed.
Brandon Choice.
Hello, my name is Brandon Choice. I am the senior vice president of business development for School Wires. We offer a website, community management platform solution, and we enjoy the pleasure of serving the district here in that capacity. We work with over 1,200 different school districts throughout the country and over 47 states. And one of the conversations that we are continuing to have with these various school districts is developing alternative ways of funding their schools. The conversation around sponsorships and ads is a growing conversation. It's not one that is new, but the demand is actually increasing, is what we're seeing. We're also beginning to see some very creative and innovative ways of affecting advertising in school districts. But I think the most important component that we're seeing is the school districts actually putting policies in place that help to govern and address many of the issues that we know surround this particular topic. And so I've had the opportunity to see the policy that Bernie's referenced. And what I can tell you, based on what I've seen across the country, is... And what I can tell you, based on what I've seen across the country, is that policy gets very much to the core issues that we're hearing talked about throughout the country as relates to this topic. And in many ways, it's much more restrictive and controlled, and I think that's a very positive thing for this particular topic. The other thing that I'd like to add is that the definition of sponsorships is commonly talked about in terms of product sales or advertising. But there are many companies that have education-focused messages, education-focused programs, that they would like to deliver information related to those programs directly to their intended audience. That isn't just the student, it's the parents and the teachers as well. And so the opportunity to have a focused audience to deliver that message exists with private sector organizations, and for that opportunity, they would be willing to make a contribution. So the sponsorship definition can extend beyond the sale of just product, but it also can be the dissemination of education-friendly, education-focused messaging related to programs that these organizations have. Based on our experience, our conversation, I spent 18, 19 years in the private sector, specifically in the marketing and advertising space, specifically in education, for many of those years, developing these types of programs. And I can tell you that it's a conversation in the private sector as well. How do we get the message closer to the intended audience, not just the students, but the parents and teachers as well? Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jackson?
Thank you for your presentation, Bernie. We appreciate your work and we know that we had asked you to look into this particular item. I have several comments, and the first one that I would make is that I feel very strongly this should be a first reading. There are some things that are important to the society as a whole. They shouldn't just come to us and we just approve them. As one of the parents stated earlier, she just heard about this today, and there's several other people who have been sending us emails and making phone calls because they just heard about this. And while I appreciate the polling that was done earlier in the year, I do think that we need to do, I do, we're giving public a broader opportunity to correspond about this particular item. Next, I think that if we're gonna look at this policy and discuss it, it has to be the entire policy, not just the advertising part of it. The reason that we had restricted the literature on our school campuses is because the public education, the school sites are the last place the advertisers have not been able to get to. A few years ago, we had to pull out our Coke machines and things of that nature because of the advertising. And I do have concerns about opening up again. I thank you because you did leave elementary school off the list, so I truly appreciate that, but my concern goes a little bit further now. On page five of your presentation, so on page four, I think that the current policy has to be looked at, the entire policy, not just advertising, but how things are allowed to come on our campuses. That has been a continual problem for a long time, how those things get approved prior to going on the campus. On page five, I don't view this as a key role for the principals. Principals come and go in schools and communities. It has to be a community decision. I would really hate for a principal to be at a school site and decide, yes, I want to allow this advertising, and they're gone in a year and the community is stuck with that. It has to be a community decision, if even that. I don't support the advertising at our schools, and I'll say that upfront. The advertising that I support, generate income for our district, would be our district website, the places that adults tend to go to. I don't support its marketing on our school, our individual school websites. Only places that are here, the Ed Center where it's adults, that type of thing, I can support, but I can't support advertising that's put right in front of the children each and every day. So, but that is, my main thing is that I think this should be just a first reader discussion tonight to give the people a chance to provide more input. And if we're gonna modify it, I will modify it so where that certainly we do need to include literature piece that was taken out. And the reason that it's so important is because a lot of people bring things to our schools that they want us to put out, and we have to say no. But that needs to be part of this whole advertising discussion that we have in our policy. And I'll wait for my next round for the rest of my comments.
If I could, the literature distribution language was left in the draft, just as it was in the existing policy. So there's no change to that. That's section eight of the policy. It's the same as what we had before. We made no changes.
I agree that the policy needs revision, but I don't agree that, you know, free isn't free. You know, just because somebody, you know, we're hurting for money, bleeding and all that, but you know, I can go back to when I heard the story about how the lottery was gonna do for schools, and the answer that everybody gave and still gives, you can go out in the community and say, you know, we need money. Oh, the lottery, why don't you just use the money from the lottery? So every time you get something that says like it's gonna do something for the schools, give you money, I can just see people saying, I don't think I'm gonna vote for something because you guys are getting all you need from advertising. Well, this isn't even a dent compared to some of the measures that we're talking about being on the ballot, and yet we could possibly lose those issues based on the fact that we're willing to take advertising because that's the magic solution for the schools, and it isn't. A hundred grand? We waste 100 grand a year, you know? Okay, so that's different. But okay, so now the lottery is the issue for me. It's like a parallel. It's like I learned from that. I also learned from Channel One. Some of you are too young to even know about it, but they came to us and said, they're gonna give us all this good stuff, and all our schools would have all this beautiful stuff, and all we had to do is put them in the school for free, and the kids would watch it periodically, and we get to announce all these good things at schools. Meanwhile, they got a piece of the kid's mind. I don't want to do that, all right? These kids are valuable. They need to make up their own mind. We need to teach them critical thinking, not jam thoughts down their heads with our stuff, okay? So now we go to the next piece, which is, I'll call it the bad karma. I don't want to be a part of using kids to sell stuff. Now, you know, I majored in marketing. It's a big thing for me. And I know there's two kinds of advertising, institutional versus product. You know, and the message you'll say is this bland stuff is just gonna leave a nice image, a nice image of, let's say, I don't want to name a company, Company X. Company X is a nice company, it's good, you know, it's got a brand name, you know, you can use Pepsi or Coke, but they also sell cigarettes, you know? So you can't get into this whole area of just because they're nice to us and they don't put down, they sell cigarettes in the school ads, doesn't mean they're running off drinking money on stuff that they shouldn't be somewhere else. So when I get into this whole arena of advertising and kids, I'm not gonna go there. I just can't do it. You know what? Then you got the final thing is people get to choose and set standards. How do you choose between which brand you allow? Is it gonna be how many lunches you go to, or how many of the parents thought it was a good idea? It's a bad idea. It's just a bad idea, period, because you can't come up with the right set of standards to measure who's gonna be influenced into saying this is okay and not. I'm not gonna support this at all. You know, for 100 grand, 200 grand, 500 grand, forget it.
Dr. Robb? Okay, well, I certainly support what the mother was saying in terms of, you know, schools being the last, one of the last commercial-free zones. I think that's very important. I think we have been looking at this measure because we really believe that in desperate times, it requires desperate measures. So we're willing to consider lots of things in terms of revenue for the district. And I've had conversations with Mr. Reinsen about this too, but as I'm looking at this, I'm realizing that this is really opening up a whole Pandora's Box of all kinds of things for a very small amount, relatively small amount of revenue. We're talking about the principal approving it, well, then let's have the parents approve it, and we have a committee. We don't have time with our educational mission to be having discussions about what type of advertising to have or not have in our school. And I think it's very clear that we don't want any kind of product displaying and so forth. I mean, even on the website, when I see, well, I don't want to get in trouble like Oprah Winfrey, but for a particular company.
Don't go there.
You know, I just, it doesn't, it doesn't look that professional to me. So I just, what I, and this is a little bit along the lines of what Mr. DeBeck was saying, I would be willing to look at something that was, in terms of corporate contributions to education and giving them some sort of acknowledgement for their contribution, more along the lines of, you know, on KPBS or something like that, where you mention who some of the sponsors are, or some appreciation to local X company has donated, has donated $10,000 to our local school. But nothing that would be along, but not in the range of advertising. So, you know, and I would certainly be willing to contact local companies and say, we would like to have contributions for you to help our schools and raise the $100,000 rather than having it done through advertising. So it's just, and I agree with Mr. DeBeck, it's just not, besides all the other issues, it's just not enough money to be opening up this complicated box at this point.
Ms. DeBeck, do you want to comment?
No, I think I call it pretty clear.
Yeah, I, first of all, I want to thank Bernie Reinsen for doing this work and the thorough way that you've gone about it, surveying principals and really trying to clarify the issues. I think for me, this is, this is a really narrow, we're trying to thread a really narrow needle here because this is so difficult and I am absolutely sympathetic to the parent who talked about, you know, the last sort of free spaces in society for our kids. Let me, I'll just throw out a few things that I think I would need to see, and you know, I support Ms. Jackson's point about a first reading, that I would need to see, but these might be things that make it so difficult to proceed that it might not be worth it. I would need to, number one, have the board establish a set of standards or at least issues that we would judge potential companies who would want to advertise in our space against. I want to know the company's, you know, record in terms of, you know, promoting or hurting child health, child labor, environmental sustainability, support for families, community investment, to name a few. I want to know what this company has done in terms of its lobbying that has made our funding crisis at the state better or worse. So, you know, it's a little bit tough to, and I think the people, the speakers have come out tonight, but it's a little bit tough to hear the people from the corporate community come and talk about the schools are in desperate, you know, straits and you need revenue. My question is, what are you doing to influence the state budget that puts us in a situation that we're either more likely to balance a budget that supports public education in our kids, or less likely to balance a budget that supports public education in our kids? And obviously, $100,000 and then $5,000, $10,000 here and there don't come near dealing with the crisis that we're facing. But I guess what I'd want to see more than anything is I'd want to see some real analysis done about companies that potentially want to advertise to our kids in terms of, you know, these different, you know, where they measure up on different issues. And because it's middle and high school students, I'd then want our kids to be able to do this analysis, or at least review analysis that's been done from credible sources, and then weigh in, you know, school by school, is that a company that we want here in our space? You know, with all due respect, and I respect the potential vendors who've come before us, none of the vendors have the capability of doing that kind of analysis, and it's not in their interest to do so. The interest of the vendors is to identify companies that would come and get in front of our kids. It's not to screen companies out. So, you know, the bar that I would set for this is pretty high, maybe impossibly high, but ultimately has to relate directly to the kinds of critical thinking work that our kids are already doing. And if we could, you know, if we could get a policy that could get us to that bar, I'd be interested in that because as much as I, you know, as a parent, share the, you know, desire to protect our kids in our public spaces, our kids aren't protected, and they're out in our society every day and they're gonna go out into our society. And if this is an opportunity for kids to sharpen their skills at being able to be, you know, strong consumers going forward, I'd be interested in that. So I guess that's where I would be right now.
I guess at this point, the issue is, do we really, I understand about the first reading and not taking action on one hand, on the other hand, is there enough? I don't think there's enough support on the board to really warrant a lot of staff time being put into this because I agree with all the points you made, and that is an extremely high bar. I think we had the openness to say, okay, let's look at this and see what the revenues would be, see what the potential pitfalls are and so forth, and we've done that. I'm just concerned about telling staff to go back and work on this more if we're not, if there isn't a majority of the board that's very open to considering this.
Why don't we drop it?
Okay, we've got a motion to drop it. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Any further comment? Okay, please vote. All right, we will move on. Okay, and I guess our last item on the agenda, thank you, Bernie, is...
Thank you very much, Bernie, for your hard work. We appreciate it, okay?
Our next item is H4, and this is a budget update.
Mr. Stobbe?
I had a hundred grand in here. It won't change. It's still the same.
Yeah, that's gone.
All right, back in the spring, the board asked the finance department to present to you a monthly summary and year-to-date summary of activities, expenditures, balances, that kind of a thing. We provided you our first report on July 25th, August 25th, excuse me, August 25th, for those results through the month of July. We also promised you that at each meeting, the first meeting of the subsequent month, we would give you a high-level review of that report, answer any questions. And Amy Shackelford, our director of budget development, is here tonight, and she's going to present you from the PowerPoint that you have, a brief summary of the document you got, and we hope to be able to take your feedback and continually each month to improve what we're doing for you, to be able to give you the information that you want. Thank you.
So, good evening, President Barrera, members of the board, Superintendent Kova, and members of the staff. Tonight, I'll be presenting some key points for our July financial results. I'll be walking through some items of our cash balances and our revenues and expenses, talk about some of the budget watch list items that we have, and then what our next steps for finance are gonna be with the upcoming months. Cash balance for the general fund. As you may recall, back in the spring, one of our budget challenges was the added interest expense for our trans note. We did have to go out for a $253 million trans note, and so as a result of that, and with a lot of the deferrals that the state has put on us, we would like to be, to provide to you a monthly update of what our cash flows look like for the general fund. For the month of July, we were $6.6 million less than expected. Fortunately, the majority of this variance was due to timing issues. We did get some funds in from the federal government as a result of some 2009-10 revenues that we were expecting for Title I and the ARA dollars. The state yet again has put another deferral on us, so we did have some, about $7 million of deferrals that we are now expecting to get in September. And we had some local funds, transfers that we need to be doing in August. Unfortunately, we weren't able to complete those in July, and that's about $7 million for our Copley and our Vision Fund transfers. Those are part of our budget solutions to close the gap in our general fund unrestricted. I did want to point out one item on our revenue limit. Normally, when we get increases on our revenue limit, it's because we've had ADA changes. One of the items... One of the items that makes up our revenue limit is our property taxes. We just finished the property value assessments with the county office, and as a result, normally we have to pay out to the charters to reimburse for their piece of that property tax income. For the first time in as many years as we can remember, the charters actually have to pay us for those property taxes. Unfortunately, they are also having cash issues, so they weren't able to pay in July as expected. We will be resolving that within August and September, so that's just another timing variance. In addition, we did receive some reimbursement from the cafeteria fund of about $2 million. We do have a regular payment plan worked out with them. That fund currently, after this $2 million reimbursement, still has a remaining balance of about $12.3 million. Revenues, unfortunately, we still don't have a state budget, so there's very little to report out from a state perspective. I did want to talk about three items. We do have some updates from when this was originally put together last week. The $4 million that, the surplus state fiscal stabilization funds, we did receive notification that they have been approved. We don't have a disbursement date that we will be receiving those funds yet, but the good news is that the money is coming. We continue to monitor the status of our SDA, the AB 184, the $18 million issue that we have with the special disabilities revenue, as you approved last week on our conditional budget. We did have to take our reserves down as a result of those funds, and we continue to monitor that. The bill has made it to the governor's desk. Unfortunately, we don't have an approval yet on that. The last item I wanted to talk about was the federal jobs bill.
Sorry, do we know what date triggered the 30-day clock?
Um, I don't know the specific date when...
Probably, it was 31st.
That's when I went to his desk, in the rule.
There was a...
As soon as it goes to his desk, then the 30 days starts.
Yes, we don't know the exact dates.
And he's gone.
Yes.
So, but you assume that when it got to his desk, he was here.
Right.
Yes.
All right, so then...
We're at least a week into it, I would say.
I would think so.
Ten days, because there was a delay between the time it got there.
The lieutenant governor could sign it. It's his ability to act for the governor while he's gone. But if he doesn't, then we still are sitting here with no money.
Yes, and speaking of the lieutenant governor, he did sign the federal jobs bill, the SB 847, he did sign last week, so my note saying that the governor has not yet signed this legislation is now updated, that it has been signed. As a result of the approval of this bill, 90% of these funds are to be released to the LEAs within two weeks, so we should be receiving about $19.2 million, give or take, about two weeks from, I believe they signed, he signed it on Friday. The remaining 10%, we will not receive until around April 2011. Also, that amount could be adjusted based on our P2 that we submit in April, so there's a chance it could go up or down, depending on what our ADA is at that time. Just a couple of items I wanted to highlight on the expenses. Total general fund, our remaining balance, we're down to $204 million. Last year about this time, we were at about $220 million. 47 million of that balance is our required reserves. I also wanted to point out, this is, this information is before our adopted budget, as these are financials as of July 31st. So, when we report out on August, it'll change, and then when the SDA is reinstated, it'll change again. So, the next couple of months, we're going to, our reserves are just going to be doing a little bit of a yo-yo. So, that leaves about $147 million remaining. That is unencumbered at this time. That covers basically all of our utilities, supplies, any hourly, any vacancies that we fill after July 1st. Those salaries would be encumbered, and then I would also take down those remaining balances. As of July 31st, we did have an excess positions of 279 FTE. Elementary, there's about 113, secondary about 133, and about 32 classified. Since we do encumber the annual salaries for all of our staff, there is $22 million sitting right now in what we call a holding department. As we go through our staffing processes in August, September, October, our second Friday and our first Friday, those salaries and those personnel would be moved to our vacancies, and then that encumbrance would go down. I got, did get an update from HR this morning. It is good news. As of today, they have successfully placed all of those excess positions in vacant spots. I do want to footnote, though, that as they go through second Friday and fourth Friday, as enrollment fluctuates, if schools are dropping enrollment and they have surplus positions, we could have some shuffle that, we could have some excess positions. If we have growth, we might have, might resolve those issues for those schools that did lose enrollment.
Amy, could you just go back to that last bullet there? What does that mean, that our spending and hiring freezes have been lifted?
So, what we've done is, we have been put, actually, the guidelines should be distributed by, I believe by Monday, and they are guidelines of how we are going to be handling expenditures and the filling of vacancies. The term "freeze" has been lifted, and it's now being described as guidelines, so that we don't want to totally immobilize the schools and the departments. There is an approved budget. They do have the positions. They do have to go through a prioritization process that will be outlined in those guidelines, and it'll basically be a triage effect that they will work through their senior leadership to collectively, within their organizations, prioritize which positions would then be filled.
But it's a misnomer to say "hiring freezes." It's basically, what you're saying is, they are going to have to go into the surplus pool to find bodies. It's not that they get to hire outside. Because when you say "hiring freeze," what you're saying is, new people coming to apply to the district basically can't get hired. But when you have people already employed, that's a, that's a transfer within the employment ranks of our people, and it's not a freeze, it's basically moving people around.
I think there's some...
There, yeah.
There were some positions, you know, that, and I use our CSOs, those positions were frozen, so the school sites could not fill them. And in order for the school to be able to fill them, they had to lift the freeze because...
They were budgeted.
Right. They were budgeted, but we had, they were just frozen because we could not, we had hiring freeze on.
We do have critical positions at the school sites that have been frozen.
But I guess at that point, that whole idea of a freeze is basically, it wouldn't be appropriate to freeze somebody who's already a district employee from a job, because that's exactly what we're trying to do, is to find places to put everybody. So, that's an illogical, the word "freeze" is illogical. It's basically a reassignment of existing personnel, should be approvable. You know, I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's even an argument.
Could I ask, maybe the superintendent to give a little bit of the sense of, what's the, maybe the practical difference between having a freeze in place versus the guidelines? And are we worried at all that without a freeze in place and moving to guidelines, that we're going to get a little bit more lax in terms of spending?
No, I think what we have done is, we did all the freezes last year, which improved the bottom line. We eliminated all the vacancies that were authorized by the board. And we've told, and are telling by guidance to central office and to campuses, "This is all the money you have. This is it after the 25% cut to supplies and books. This is it after all of the adjustments. This is all you have." The spending guidelines talk about, you know, not backfilling full-time positions with hourlies, carefully managing the discretionary funds you have. The hiring is only to hire to authorize vacant funded positions, and/or is what HR is doing now, is trying to move all of the folks that are permanent employees into a position. But this is all the money you have, no more, no less, and you go through with the controls.
Would it be safe to say, other than moving someone around to fill a position, that hiring any additional person not currently employed by the district would have a very high level of scrutiny?
Yes.
All the way up to the top of the district?
Yes, and you could be extremely unlikely, with the handful of exceptions, that those skill sets that we need can't do without, prescribed by law, or some code, or necessary in the classroom. I mean, that's the kind of exceptions that we're talking about.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Stover, review.
Well, any allocated position for a school, school or central office, has to come to one of the deputies for approval. Any new position that someone would want to create would have to go to the superintendent and have the superintendent's approval, so it's very tight controls.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. Sorry.
So, for our budget watch list, these are some of the key items that we've been monitoring that could potentially impact the general fund. The SDA that we've mentioned before, we do have a programmatic review that we're working with on the first five school readiness. The excess positions, the $22 million, we continue to monitor that. That amount should go down significantly once we get past the fourth Friday. Two-day vice principal workday, that was a result of the furlough issue. They were below the minimum required by PERS, so we had to reinstate that. And then, the state fiscal stabilization funds and the general, and the federal jobs bill were just approved on Friday, so they will come off of the watch list. The next slide, I just wanted to represent, just high-level, all of the other funds besides the general fund. Couple of the funds that I wanted to point out. Our building fund, that in essence is Prop S. We did receive our $200 million geo bond in August, so you'll, and next month's results, you'll see the budget has increased by that amount. Our state school facilities fund, our remaining balance is $218 million. We are keeping tight controls on that fund. It is a source, the main source of our alternative liquidity when we go out for external financing, and so we have implemented a review committee and have tight controls on the spend of that, so we can continue to monitor that fund. The bond interest and redemption fund, that in essence is the repayment of our Prop MM, so that 123 just represents the payments that we have to make to pay back the bond. And the self-insurance fund, that in essence are self-insurance funds, like our vision and our liability and the property, and so that in essence is just reserved for future This next slide represents a little more detailed breakdown of our general fund. You'll see on here that within the $204 million remaining balance, about 77 million is on the unrestricted side, and about 127 million is on the restricted side. As we go through September, August, September, October results, you're going to see a shift between unrestricted and restricted. This happens every year as we take those excess positions and move them either into funded school site positions or into restricted funds, like our Title I positions in our ARA, the stimulus funding. And so, right now, we've got about 11% remaining balance in the unrestricted, and about 26% remaining balance in the restricted. And you'll see that shift up until about October, November, and that should stabilize at that point. Overall, we've got about a 17.5% remaining balance in the general fund. This next slide represents basically a major account breakdown of our general fund budget. Just as a reference point, the total general fund budget is about $1.169 million, or $1.2 billion in essence. About, the majority of that is in salaries and employee benefits. You'll see on the right-hand side, a breakdown of our $204 million remaining balance. In essence, about a quarter of that is in our reserves, and about half of that is in employee salaries, and about a quarter of that is in our books and supplies. And again, the remaining balance reflects what is not encumbered yet, and so as we go through the months, this pie basically will continue to shrink as we go through our months of actuals. This next slide represents the unrestricted view. General fund unrestricted budget is 683 million. Of that, our remaining balance, again, is 76.9 million. The budget, the majority of that is in salaries and benefits. You'll see on this piece that we've had a little shift, that the majority, about a quarter of our funds are still the reserves, but you'll see that tiny sliver of the pie is all that we have left for salaries and benefits. That goes back to the $22 million that we have of excess positions. So, again, as the months go on, you'll see that fluctuate, and again, as we begin filling vacancies, that remaining balance will also decrease. And as we encumber things like our utilities and our materials and our supplies, that piece will also go down. Something that we are working on for August results, the feedback that we heard last week was to give further breakdown of the books and supplies. So, for July results, it's still consolidated into one item, but we will be working on breaking that down into further detail for you. Lastly, this is the restricted view. There's about $485 million in the general fund restricted budget. We've got a remaining balance of about 127 million. About half of that is salaries, and about 14% is reserves. And again, as you, as we go through the months, you'll see that shift as we move from unrestricted to restricted. Lastly, closing, next steps. We do have a budget workshop for next, scheduled for next week. We do need to begin the development of the process and the timeline of our 2011, '12 deficit. Right now, as we stand, if the SDA is not approved, we have a current deficit of about $159 million. If it does get approved and our reserves are restated, our deficit will be $141 million. We need to begin the process quickly, because throughout the month of October, November, we need to start the engagement, looking at the areas of where we're going to be able to come up with the reductions. On November 1st, finance, we begin our first interim analysis, and we have until December 15th to submit that to the county office. November gets a bit tricky, because we do now have the management furloughs and Thanksgiving holidays, so the number of business days that we have in November is significantly decreased this month, so we do need to begin having those workshops with the board and the inputs early, early in November, so that we have ample time to incorporate those decisions into the first interim results and get the report to the county office by the 15th. Any questions?
Thanks, Amy. Go ahead, Mr....
Yeah, thanks a lot. This, the graphic presentation is interesting, good way to keep track of things, but there's some questions that I still have in my mind that I don't know how we're going to get to them. One is, we made projections of savings based on assumptions that may or may not be coming through. And I'll use example, two examples that I know right off, that I'm really concerned about. One is the potential savings from OSIL reductions in time when, where, you know, what happens to it, either going to have part-time employees or something. Okay, that's one. Is, are the projected savings in OSIL caused by the cutting back of the days of the program actually resulting in the projected savings that we said they would? I think they're not, but that's, you know, I'd like to be proven wrong. The next one is, what about the projected income from charging for transportation? And the effect of that on enrollment in the programs where transportation may have been offered before for nothing, and now the people are saying, "I don't want to do that," and so that means that program is having adverse enrollment effects that would be, I think, terrible income consequences, or would then have kids that are going to their neighborhood schools where the balance is going to be wrong. So, the October balance report is going to be really critical for me, is where's the money and where's the allocations? And I think it's going to be a terrible misbalance, because I, and I don't think, and maybe somebody, you know it, because you're getting the money, I don't think we're receiving the money from the transportation funds that we anticipated at all. The people I'm talking to say, "I don't spend that money. You know, it used to give it to me for free, now I got a choice. I won't spend it." And, you know, if that's the case, then that transportation bundle that we've got is going to have to go away. Now, we may have given amnesty to people while they decide to pay, but sooner or later, we're going to have an accounting of, what's the gap? What's the gap between the subscribers that want to keep paying, their share, whatever we called it, and those that say, "No, I'm opting out because I got problems at home anyways?" So, you know, I think that this is a critical set of data that we need to look at, because we made some assumptions that I think are probably too optimistic, to be blunt.
Yes, we do have about a million dollar assumption in our, in our budget as far as the transportation revenue, and we can include that as a readout in the next month's results to see where we're at.
Okay, thank you very much. But a good report. It's easy to understand, it covers the bases, and I thank you. It's easy to understand, it covers the bases, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first, I just wanted to support what Mr. DeBeck is saying, that that's very useful information for me, too, to know when we projected savings in certain things. I know the previous year, we had said, "We're gonna try to raise attendance," and we put a certain amount into the budget that we were going to gain by increasing our attendance, and that didn't necessarily materialize. The same thing can happen in transportation, in all other areas. Related to that, which is probably a little more complicated, is when we talked about the year-to-date. Well, first of all, last year, this year's budget, the way that we solved a lot of it was due to what we did during the year last year, in terms of really halting spending and tightening things up and so forth. And that helped our ending balance. And I know there's not as much that we can do that this year, but that's still gonna be in effect. But I think what will be important is, as we're going along this year, let's just take whichever budget, transportation or whatever, that on this date, this is where we should be at, and this is where we are. I understand this is how much we've spent, and this is how much is left, and this is how much encumbered and unencumbered and so forth. But basically, by the 26th day of school and the calendar and everything else that you figure in, you would be able to calculate, okay, this is where the transportation budget should be, if we're on track, and we're either above or below. And I think in both directions, one to make corrections if we're spending faster than we should, and the other to give kudos to the people who are, you know, being diligent and saving money. But we don't, and I know we don't, you can't have, we don't have the data, I don't believe, from the years past to say, "This is where we were on this date and all that type of thing." So it is, it is something of a mathematical projection, but it would still be good, even if it's in rough terms, to say, "We seem to be on track, or we're going a little over, a little under on this."
Dr. Evans, I'm pretty darn sure they actually can give that to us for year-to-date. A year-to-date report is a pretty standard report.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about comparing to previous years on this date is not necessarily available.
And we can do that with a fiscal insight. We can do the same dates. There's still gonna be some normalization that would occur, because we do have funding spikes for things like the stabilization dollars and items like that. But once you get through July and August where we encumber the entire year's salary, because we have that initial increase, significant increase in our spend, and then from September through June, we're pretty much in the school year, and we should have pretty routine spending that goes on. Granted, we do have spikes in April and May, but we have that every year.
It's a pretty--
So that would be, that would be another chart that we'd be able to have, which is, this is what we projected we would have spent by today, and this, or whatever date we've chosen.
Or just even take page seven and just, you know, well, you've got year-to-date for July.
Right. The comparison.
Break it down.
The comparison-- Yeah, I could, I'm sorry, I'm just, back in with Dr. Evans, I can almost imagine, I don't know how easy this would be to put together, but just sort of a one-page chart that would have year-to-date budget versus actuals revenue, year-to-date budget versus actuals expenses, particularly on general fund unrestricted, and almost like a trend line, you know, that's going along, where would we predict that we should be, you know, this month? It's an excellent report, and I appreciate the work. I guess my question is, you know, we're now, I don't know how many days past the state resolving its budget, how much longer can we last?
I don't know.
I mean, do we have any ability to have a sense of that? If the state goes into October, November, December with no budget, what happens?
We can look at that analysis this week.
Yeah.
We just keep borrowing money.
Yeah, we'll go through our trans note really quick.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
We have received all our trans note revenue, so that helps from a cash flow--
Yeah.
--perspective.
Yeah.
But it's gonna put everyone under tremendous stress the longer we have to--
Yeah.
Did I sense that we got more state money, we're allowed more state money because our local taxes were lower?
The property taxes were lower, and normally we have to reimburse the charter schools. This year, for the first time, they had to actually pay us.
But, yeah, but we didn't get the money yet from the state either.
Correct.
So basically, what we got was, we got less local tax money in the pot, you know, the cash.
Cash.
And we also got, because of that, we got a promise that the state will pay us some money yet, but we're not, we don't have that yet. So that's a cash flow problem.
Correctly, that, yes, that is the September deferral that we do have.
But the money, I mean, the numbers on the accounting books look like, okay, that's all right, it's a wash, but it's not, because basically, our income in cash is less, and the promissory note that we have from the state is bigger. Not good. Okay.
And last meeting, we put a phone number out there for the governor's office to call to sign our bill. Maybe we need to get the lieutenant governor's phone--
It's a long distance call.
Yeah. Maybe we need to get the lieutenant governor's, you know, number up there on our website.
Yeah, he can do something important while the governor's calling.
Well, I just, yeah, I'd like to, you know, say, Amy, you did a good job with this. I'm in Charlotte. Excuse me. I think that this is a good report. I've been waiting for this for about eight years, and thank you very much. But I also want to say, you know, the longer that the governor, and I know I keep ringing this bell, but, you know, the banks make out like bandits, the longer he delays this budget. And, you know, I'm gonna be really controversial and say, you know, "I wonder who's gonna be funding his next movie." I mean, you know, if I were the bank, I would just love him to pieces right now. And, you know, that's, it's, this is unconscionable. It's just unconscionable that we're, but we have to follow this money as closely as we are. I would like to see, you know, if there's a quick report on transportation, and how many parents have opted out on that transportation issue fairly quickly, and also, well, I guess we'll get the third Friday report on enrollment, so just exactly how many kids we've got. But I am concerned about, you know, the language academy or any of our magnet schools, any of the others that might be hurting. We haven't heard any reports from that this year. It seems to be holding solid so far.
Nothing noticeable.
Nothing noticeable. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Maybe if the governor signs a budget that protects education, we'll allow him to advertise on our website his next movie.
No, we won't.
Yeah, or no, we won't. All right. We're adjourned.
Yeah. I'm not-- Have we done?